Good evening and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of Ferney City Council held on October 21st, 2025, Kisukiu Kit. We acknowledge the city of Ferney is located within Kukinamakis, the unceded territory of Yakit Etnokeet First Nation. We recognize that we live and work within their vast lands. The Kanahunik are from Yakit Etnokeet and are members of the Tanaha-speaking peoples of British Columbia, Idaho, and Montana. I will call the meeting to order at 6:31 PM. And I will ask for a mover and a seconder for the following staff recommendation that the agenda of the October 21st, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting be adopted. Moved by Counselor Hamilton, seconded by Counselor McIsaac. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. And I'll ask for a mover and a seconder and a seconder for the following staff recommendation that the minutes of the September 16th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting be adopted. Moved by Counselor Hamilton, seconded by Counselor Audie Kelly. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. And I'll open the floor to public participation and invite the public in attendance or participating electronically who wish to comment on items listed on the meeting agenda in accordance with Section 3.7.3 of the Procedure Bylaw to address counsel except speakers must not address counsel regarding a matter for which a public hearing must be held or has been held pursuant to Local Government Act prior to counsel's consideration of the matter or adoption of the bylaw. Speakers must not address counsel regarding a permit for which public notice must be given or has been given pursuant to Local Government Act prior to counsel's consideration of issuance of the permit. A speaker may only address counsel for a maximum of three minutes. Speakers are asked to state their full name and community of residence. And before I invite the speaker up, I'll just remind folks, we did have a time clock. It malfunctioned. We don't have it anymore. So our corporate officer will track folks' time. This is for the delegations as well. We'll track folks' time and she'll give you a yellow card, 30-second warning, and a red card when you're done. Thank you. And our first speaker is?
Our first speaker is Pierre Dupont.
Welcome, Mr. Dupont.
Good evening. I'm Pierre Dupont. I live in Ferney. And I'm here speaking on behalf of the Ferney Pet Society. So I'm going to provide some comments on Agenda Item 7.3 and specifically the staff recommendation to review the pet licensing strategy. So I'll just dive right in. We have, we, there's some weaknesses in the current strategy, the current licensing system. First of all, we know that, you know, just on, on, on the average population of Ferney, there's about 1,400 dogs here. And license, the number of licenses issued is in the low 200s. So about a 15% compliance rate with licensing. So that's one, one of the shortcomings of the licensing program is it's got a poor adoption rate. It operates on a fixed period. So a license bought in January is the same as a license bought in June. They're the same cost, yet they, you know, they both end in December. And this, the licenses must be purchased in person. You have to pick up your license at the, at City Hall. There's no online ability to, to search or make updates to the license information. And there's limited use in terms of tracking lost pets when there's nobody at City Hall. So, you know, in, on the evenings, weekends, holidays, when there's nobody there, the licenses have limited use in that for a lost pet. So some of the, the benefits of using the DocuPet model would be, hopefully, first of all, increased compliance. You know, get, get more people involved in, in getting a dog license. It does, the license goes from, for 12 months from the date of purchase. So when your license is near expiry, the system will send out a notice to you saying time to renew. Licenses are purchased online. They're delivered by mail. Or there's an option to, for City Hall to continue issuing licenses. There is a 24/7 lost pet hotline. The phone number is on each license. You find a, you find a dog or you lose a dog, you phone that number. So there's no, there's no downtime in, in the lost and found system. We, we propose doing a, an incentive program where we, we would provide incentives with local businesses. When you purchase a license, you get discounts at that business. So that it will increase the, the compliance of licensing. It's a, the system is fairly low cost to set up $3,000 and is about a $1,000 annual fee. So it, the, the money can be used to fund pet services in town. So assuming we get even a 50% compliance rate, that would be 700 licenses issued at about $20. So, you know, it's $14,000 that you can use to fund pet services or put in your reserve for future parks. And once set up, the system is entirely run by the DocuPet staff. So there's no, there's no maintenance required by city staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dupont. Appreciate it.
I have more.
Feel free to forward that if you like. Anyone else? No one online? Okay. Ah, no, I don't think, I think everybody's here for. Uh, thank you again, and we will now move on to delegations. And we have a series of delegations from our community partners, starting with the Senior Citizens Club of Ferney. And welcome, citizen of the year. Yeah. You are so welcome and thank you for all you do. You have 10 minutes and Lavinia will let you know when you're getting close.
Sure. Thank you. First of all, I do appreciate the soccer-based yellow and red card system of warnings. It's nice to see. And secondly, thank you, side note, for bringing discretionary grants back and wanting to continue those. It was great to see that. Now, back to me. My name's Courtney Baker. I'm the administrator here at the Senior Citizens Drop-In Center for the Senior Citizens Club of Ferney and District, technically. We're just going to give you a quick presentation focusing more really on our financials. I think what we're up to is pretty well-known in the, in the community. We do exist to provide social, recreational, educational, all sorts of programming for, for older residents and visitors to the community, older residents being aged 21. So if anyone is interested in purchasing a membership, you're welcome to do so. Crib is very popular among the winter sets. Just a side note, everyone from Nova Scotia. They ski and play crib. We, right now, we currently do 51 hours of programming a week. And then the cafe is open for 20 hours a week as well. Programming is open only to members. The cafe is open to the public or the building, just generally to hang out, is open to the public. We do a lot of collaborations right now. The Juice Box Socials are starting up. So if anybody has little ones, it's Pancake Day on Friday with the under two set. I highly recommend it. Annie does a great job. There's a digital lending library, a whole bunch of new stuff coming up, workshops next week, all the exciting stuff. Moving on a little bit, so historically, we were completely volunteer-run up until 2016 when the city of Ferney started generously providing an operating grant in the amount of $24,000 that year. Up until then, it was just the dedication of, well, at that point, 55 years of pure volunteer work. So they, all the people involved were great and they received, you know, a little time to themselves and not have to write grants. So they hired me to do that. So that was great. And maintain a spreadsheet. So yay. So with your, with your funding in that chart, the green being our budget, blue being city of Ferney funding, you can see that our, what we're able to accomplish and our budget has definitely risen much, much more than the funding over the years. The 2021 drop obviously was due to COVID. And once I actually put it together and looked at it, it was interesting how it like corresponded perfectly to our, when our funding began, almost to what the, the rise and fall of budgets and funding is. As you can see, it has fluctuated a bit throughout the years, but since 2021, it has been steady at $27,000, which we are grateful for. Last year, we did operate at a bit of loss deliberately. 10,000 of our loss was deferred revenue into this year. And then we did draw down deliberately our operating funds a little bit, which all got put into building capital things. So it was reinvested back into the building. We do primarily earn our money. We are, our grants, we do purely just look for project-based grants that we're aiming for. So we don't necessarily apply continually for funding. We, we seek out specific funding when we need it. Memberships are quite good. Our membership year runs September through the end of August. So we're still early in our membership year and as of today, there's 296 members. So it's, it tends to go pretty well. If we kind of follow historical things, we should probably end up around 380 or so this year following the, the trajectory. We always get a bunch more in the wintertime. What else? Yeah. So our expenses, as you can see, they were, they were over our, our revenue. But again, that was deliberate, partly due to the deferred revenue. And then we did deliberately draw down our operating fund to cover investments into the building. Looking at this year, we are budgeting for $175,000 and change with a small contingency. I'm sure that won't exist, but it's always nice to see it. A lot of that, of course, is, is rentals. As a sad side note of the community center, our rentals have obviously increased that. I mean, obviously, our capacity is different, but we have managed to find space for, for quite a few of the groups that are, are looking for that space, that size space, if they can work it in there. We do do some fundraising with Grisdays, with the Pancake Breakfast and some pen selling and other things. The Bacon Craft Sale, which is coming up on November 15th, and cash and check only. And please bring your own bags. That would be great. Thank you for that plug. Kitchen sales do quite, quite well. We are right now currently new this year. We are helping out the Ferney Academy with their hot lunch program, which is really great. And it's great to get some of the kids in here as well. Two days a week, we do that for them. And then, yeah, our expenses correspond accordingly. We generally budget to 2% to 3% increase year over year. We do tend to be quite conservative in our budgets, which we find works quite well for us and lets us stay pretty, pretty accurate. We did hire one more staff person. So there's three of us here now, all of us are part-time, but there is three staff people. So of course wages, you know, went up, went up accordingly for that as well. Although I still use a lot of volunteers. So thank you to all, all of our many, many, many volunteers who were doing dishes today and everything else. It's much appreciated. Flipping through, there is a few currents. Our balance sheet, as you can see, is our, our end of year on May 31st. There is our finances up to date on, until October 14th on there as well. Right now, we're in good shape, which is good. A lot of that is thanks to memberships, actually. And kitchen sales are going well, which is fantastic to see. As you can see too, the, our last page with the investments, last year we did put $29,000 into the building, which was really great. There's the new, the new fireplace, the repainting, the steel, a bunch of kitchen work. So it was really good to get those things done. We've been trying to get to them for a while. So those have all been done. This year as well, we're not investing as much into the building ideally. Kitchen countertops, finishing those, that's completed. Some outdoor work, which is completed, the fans, all these exciting things, some new flooring. And then we also are looking specifically, speaking of grant funding, funding to assist with painting the exterior of the building. And as mentioned, I had, have had early discussions with Director Logan about this project as well because the building is held up surprisingly astronomically well, actually, considering that it's getting there in age and nothing really has been done outside. But the brown's a little brown. It would be, it would be nice to brighten it up somehow. Yes. So those are our plans, plans moving forward and kind of where we're, where we're at. If anybody has any questions or suggestions or comments?
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Questions from council? Counselors.
Thanks, Your Worship. Great work here, putting it all together. And really congratulate for your achievement as Citizen of the Year.
Thank you.
As well as the, you know, program growth and everything that is going on with the senior sector. My only question there, Courtney, is do you anticipate any funding requests in the future at all?
Like from the?
From the city of Ferney?
From the seniors for like not building envelope things, I assume. Like, sorry, request from me to the city or like request from the membership to me?
In the future.
No. No, I don't see it. I mean, as much as I love the T-bar ceilings, but those aren't really a, you know, they're not a, they're a nice to get rid of, not a need to get rid of. No. The building's actually in really good shape. I don't think there's anything major that needs to be done. I think all the, the, the nuts and bolts of the building is still quite strong. I have touch base with Director Logan about a few minor things, which are already in the budget. But no, I can't see anything foreseeable major happening. Knock on wood. But yeah.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Uh, just quickly for me, Courtney. Thank you for hosting, letting us host Council Cafe here.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a great atmosphere and it is a great accessible facility for that, of course. And I wanted to ask when the Christmas party is?
December 13th.
December 13th.
Yes. Tickets will go on sale probably at the bake sale.
Okay.
November 15th.
If my mother's watching, I hope she's getting motivated now to get here. Thank you. Oh, Counselor McIsaac.
Uh, thank you, Worship. Just occurred to me. This is a question actually not for Ms. Baker, but for staff. And that is, I wonder, does the city incur costs for this facility that are not captured in the budget? As in work that we're doing, whether it's maintenance or utilities or snow clearing, et cetera, et cetera? Do we have an idea of what that number looks like?
I'd like to ask a clarifying question. When you say in the budget, do you mean in the senior center budget or in the municipal budget?
Yeah. No, what's in our budget that isn't in the senior center budget?
There.
I can answer that if you want me to.
Okay.
We do. We have building maintenance costs and staff time and snow removal that are all provided, but they're captured in the operating budgets. We'd have to pull those out uniquely. We could look at some of our reporting for you.
It's not urgent. Thank you.
Counselors.
Your Worship, I'm sorry, I should have asked this earlier as well. You said you drew down $13,000 to reinvest in some of the work here. Do you anticipate the reserves going up in the future? Or will it remain in the same situation in the future years too?
No, we have talked about that, actually. We have a really fantastic treasurer. We're really fortunate to have a really great treasurer. So, so Nikki and I have been talking about, we, we have a policy never to touch our reserves ideally. So like the what's there has been there for a good seven years at least. So it's, but we, we have been talking about making one new reserve and then putting a little bit of money into the other reserves. Partly just for investment purposes and then partly just to, if we don't necessarily need the money, because not, there is a few reserves that are in longer-term investments somewhere and shorter-term ones. So if we did have to draw off of them, we could. So, yeah.
Counselor Audie Kelly?
Uh, thanks, Your Worship. This actually is, is not for Courtney so much, I think, as maybe for Director Logan. The, the beams outside, there was some.
They're on his list.
They're on, they're on the list?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I believe if we look up at the fireplace, there's like a little bit of shininess that I think might have been some leaking.
It was. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So they are on the list? Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you.
For the work you do. Uh, next we have Wendy McDougall from the Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wendy McDougall, Ferney Chamber of Commerce. I feel like this is the least prepared I've been, but maybe that will make it go better. We'll see. Um, so I'm here to provide an update on Visitor Information Center services at the Chamber. Um, you've seen this slide before. So the Visitor Information Center building and land is owned by the city. The land was donated by the province to act as a visitor center only. And the building was constructed by the Ferney Chamber of Commerce with grant funding back in the eighties. The city of Ferney and the Chamber of Commerce have had some type of partnering agreement since the 1970s. And we are currently in a five-year program, or partnering agreement, sorry, that ends at the end of this year. According to Destination BC, we provide statistics. This slide is only up until October 1st. But what it is showing is that our numbers continue to go up. So we're already anticipating having higher numbers than last year. And they've basically tripled in the last 10 years. So we are seeing more people come into the visitor center and tourism increase. This is a similar slide showing virtually the same thing, but just totals over time. What's important to note too is that this only tracks people that come into the visitor center and not those that park just at the trailhead and then head right up to Fairy Creek Falls. This one has a bit more information and a bit more insight into what our visitors do. So from last year to this year, visitation from BC, Alberta, and the rest of Canada seems to be down, whereas visitation from the US and other areas has increased. By the same token, people are coming for one day and then visitation for one to three days is down. But those that are coming from further away are staying for a longer period of time. And then the top three requests for information in the visitor center are pretty consistent. Hiking and trail suggestions, adventure and suggestions and mapping. Okay. So I'll spend a bit of time on this slide. On the revenue side, the fee for service is the combination of city funding as well as we receive $15,000 a year from Destination BC. So in 2025, we received $110,000 from the city of Ferney, which is about 60% of our total income. The remainder of that comes from Chamber of Commerce-generated revenue, grant wage subsidies, and our retail has increased year over year. In terms of overall funding for the Chamber, this 110 represents about a fifth of our Chamber budget. It is our only reoccurring revenue, so we are very thankful for that. But it is just a portion to cover running the visitor center. The rate for the partnering agreement increases 2% annually, which is below inflation. But we do manage to cover expenses with that budget. If you compare that, we've increased our income by more than that 2%. So 14% we're looking at for 2025. 2024 was a bit of an anomaly because we had a significant grant for the ammonite. The net surplus or deficit sort of fluctuated over the years, you'll see. And so that I've attributed it to a couple of highlights on the side there. So wage subsidies are unknown at the beginning of the year. So we always budget for it, but we've done quite well in the last three years. We've done a great job of retail sales and keeping the cost of goods sold down. So that's been a big achievement, I think, for our staff. And due to the small deficit in 2023, I think we were pretty cautious with our operating costs in 2024. And so we didn't have very many expenses and we were unusually low in that respect. That's all I have to say about that. Um, in terms of successes, so community impact, we have our mobile information tent. And with the Canada Summer Jobs, we were able to send some of our students to help out at the Wednesday Social and provide visitor information details there. We've worked with Destination BC to reduce the number of paper pamphlets that we produce and do that on a sort of as required basis and expanded our retail sales to include more local shops, which has been very successful on both ends. And then we're proud to be Rainbow Registered as well. In terms of securing grants, we talked about the ammonite last year, but it was actually just installed in March. So that was a big success as well as the Canada Summer Jobs. We had three great summer students this summer. So grateful for them. And then just a shout out to the city of Ferney Capital Improvements this year. So we got a fresh coat of paint or stain at the visitor center, which looks excellent. Eves have been installed. So with our metal roofing, you won't be soaked when you come in and out in the fall and when the snow melts. Parking lighting has been installed and the lines got repainted as well. And then continuously working on air quality and had an HVAC quote. So it's on our radar as well. So just a bit more detail about the Canada Summer Jobs Grant to show the fluctuation year over year. So we were able to increase it from two staff to two and one part-time, which is almost three, actually. But that sort of described the anomaly that we saw in 2024 with a surplus. We don't expect to see that continue because CBT has removed visitor services from their wage subsidy, which was a smaller portion there. And like I said, just a shout out to our summer students. They're all Ferneyites that went away to university and came back. So they were a wealth of knowledge when people came in to ask for some hiking suggestions and that. So as I was putting this presentation together, Tourism Ferney was just installing a second fossil replica. So this one is now showcased at the visitor center. They've received additional funding to continue expanding on this. So just lots more to see at the visitor center. And thank you to Tourism Ferney. To wrap it up, challenges, yeah, it's an aging building with limited funding for capital improvements. It's not really high on our radar at this point. And like many other businesses in town, we've seen lots of staff turnover and seasonality. Difficult to compete with the ski hill where they've got a ski pass and, yeah, wanting to tour around to different resort municipalities. On the opportunity side, as you know, we've been evaluating the best organization to provide visitor services. So that's sort of an ongoing conversation and just grateful for our partnership with the city and Tourism Ferney on that front. And that's everything. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. McDougall. Questions from council? Seeing none? Was it the same, was it the same contractor who did the ichthyosaur?
It is. So Dinosaur Valley out of Drumheller.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome.
And we've also got two real fossils there as well. And yeah, it's part of a larger exhibit I think they're planning to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Now we hand it over to Ferney and District Historical Society.
Oh, so my name is Mike Powder. I'm with the Ferney District Historical Society. Thank you for the time tonight, Your Worship and counselors. So the Historical Society, I've just got six slides, so we'll go through them quickly. But we've got a very long history, of course, being a historical society in Ferney, 61 years. But we are in our final year of our community partnering agreement this year, a three-year agreement that we signed in 2023. So I just thought I'd highlight on this first slide, a little small. The, two of the big milestones that we've had during that partnering agreement was in 2023, we signed the Crow's Nest Coal Transfer Agreement with the city. So we've been working diligently over the last couple of years to clean out the City Hall basement and properly archive and digitize and store all that material. So we've made very good progress. We're almost finished, but not, not quite. So the other thing as well, just earlier this year, I presented to council about the Ferney Heritage Strategy Plan. And apologies, so I didn't quite get the right words, but I, I know what that, there was a decision made at that meeting to adopt the, the strategy for the. the strategy for the upcoming O C P process. So that was a huge milestone for us because there was lots in time and effort put into that heritage strategy plan. So the the other thing that finished off during this, this last three-year funding agreement was we had a rather large hazardous remediation project that went into the museum. There was C B T funds for that, Heritage B C funds for that. So the society, we managed that project on, I guess, on behalf of the city and Heritage B C. So that officially closed off this spring when we had some final exterior work completed. So that was a great milestone and we spent every penny.
And sorry, Mike, what was the total in the end?
There was one hundred thousand of C B T funds that the city administered. And then this is, the society has got directly a two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar grant from Heritage B C.
Thank you.
So we've got summary of stats for basically three quarters of the year up until the end of September. So it's been a very, very successful year for the museum. We're seeing increases across the board with more visitation. Some of the highlights, we've actually had less staff this year, but we did fortunately have two paid summer students on grants, so that really helped. So just point out in our, our funding agreement, we have a minimum of four days open per, per week. Well, we're actually like pretty well trending seven days a week, except for eight days so far. So that's very helpful in terms of increasing the attendance and, and you'll see like big jump in terms of requests for information. So having that downtown location is another key, key factor, a key, key benefit. We get lots of those seven thousand nine hundred and eighty requests. A lot of those are general, very similar to, to the Visitor Information Center. But as well, there's a significant portion in there two, three hundred that are specific historical information research type requests. And that's really where our expertise comes into play. It shows a very large increase in program attendance. Take that with a little bit of grain of salt. We're just tracking it way better. But we truly do have that, over a thousand people attending programs. So we also track where our visitors come from. Happy to see that there's quite a large twenty-three percent local participation. So in terms of the events that we run and getting people in with new exhibits, we get good portion of our visitation, a quarter, almost a quarter from, from here in Ferney. So we have quite a busy program of events and exhibits and ongoing activities. The, the walking tour is very popular. The cemetery tours are starting here soon. Two that I just want to highlight, I already mentioned, we finished the Heritage B C Syrup C B T project. So that was in the spring. But the last point there in lower right-hand corner, with getting all those Crow's Nest Coal archive materials, we were able to get actually a federal grant of almost twenty thousand dollars to start properly digitizing all the very, very large maps. They're huge. And there's many of them. So that's been a big project. The summer students helped a lot with that this summer. So that, I thought that was really good that we were able to leverage having those archives. And now we're going to start doing something with them, so. So being in the last year of our funding agreement, let's talk financials a little bit. So not all good news. We, we ran significant losses in the first two years of the funding agreement. Staffing was, was our largest cost in that. So we did go with less staff this year because of cost. And so we do anticipate breaking even this year, which is a huge milestone for the society. Because really, we decimated our contingency reserve. So we've got fifteen thousand left in that and we have not put a penny into that over the last couple of years. So that, so that's a key concern for us. Operating grants, as you know, are very far and few between. So we get a very significant one from B C Arts. And I've mentioned it here just because we've made the application. We'll find out sometime later on this year, but that twenty-three thousand dollars is operating funds that are absolutely crucial for us. So another observation to, to keep the lights on in that building downtown, we, we've calculated just with a half, half staff and then utilities and things, it's, it's approximately an eighty-five thousand dollar cost per year. So with the fifty-two thousand dollars worth of city funding agreement, the society itself, we, we need to make up that other thirty-three thousand. The, of course, the B C Arts Grant helps a lot with that. What we found is with, with grants that are available that do have some operating funding, they, they're mostly capital grants and they're co-funded grants. They'll pay fifty percent, they'll pay a third. So it's really key that we have seed funding from the city for one or C B T for another because we can use that to leverage more grants, so. So finally, just to close off, in addition to all those positive engagements statistics that I showed you, I want to make four key points. The, the lease agreement, we, we have a twenty-five-year lease agreement with, with the city. And that, that lease agreement to Counselor McIsaac's point, the, the city actually only covers the elevator cost, Director Logan, and fire extinguishers. So our society is responsible for everything else in that building. So that, that's, that's a key concern for us, if an HVAC unit or things like that. But so that, that's one point. Second point, I mentioned that we're helping to offset over thirty thousand dollars of cost to, to operate that downtown building as a info center and as a museum. The, the third point is that as, as a society, as a charity, we can leverage the city's capital investment dollars for structural improvements. I've been in conversations with C B T. I know of federal grants and more provincial grants. And now that we've got the Heritage B C project behind us, we do have capacity again, which brings me to my last point, where we can actually help execute these projects. We've, we've got the oldest building here tonight. So there is a heritage conservation plan that exists for that building that lists a number of structural things that need to be done, windows, chimney or just two, for example. So we, we have the desire and the initiative to go after more grants. But we can execute that, which can help offload the city's resources. So with that, you'll see that we've, we've put in our, our three-year agreement was no yearly increases and it was actually a decrease from previous funding levels that we had back in twenty twenty. So you'll see that we're, we're requesting for the next three years, no yearly increase, but a significant jump to sixty-five thousand dollars a year in support. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mike. Questions from council? Counsel Ramadas?
Thanks, your worship. I've got a fun question and not so fun question, if you wouldn't mind.
Sorry, I kind of missed that?
I have a fun question and a non-fun question, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
The fun question is, you said about two hundred to three hundred information requests that you, that has come to you, like what's the, what's the oddest and the one that was really, really interesting?
I could put our executive director, Corey Deverk, on the spot. What's the most interesting question that you had?
You have to come to the mic if you can answer it. Sorry.
I've got the report on the, on the desk there, so. Nope, next. I, I think it's, a lot of them are very similar requests, of course, to the, the Visitor Information Center on the highway, but.
Well, I noticed, I couldn't help but notice, Mike, as I was passing the building yesterday, you still got visitor information deciling on the building.
That must have been from the original opening way back when.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I know we don't quite want to overlap there. There, there was co-funding.
There was historically, but there isn't anymore. So I, I'm wondering if maybe it wouldn't be prudent to not put yourself in a position and but maybe take that down.
Right, right. Yeah, we, we kind of take the visitor off and just put info center, so.
I don't think lots were genealogical requests this year. I know I had one from the Beider family in the South Endry that had some old audio film reels from Alice Parnell, which is Michael Phillips's daughter. So that's one I worked on that I could think of.
Right.
Sent to Nelson to get digitized, so they're nice to have. Yeah, I'd have to think.
That's awesome. No, that's, that's a good one.
So now the hard question.
The non-fun question. I mean, you guys are providing like a tremendous amount of service here, right? I, I follow your Instagram page and some of the information snippets that comes out of it is like fabulous. I'm just wondering, like, have you thought about any more revenue improvement opportunities for yourself to close that thirteen thousand dollar gap?
Right. The, the one, the one initiative that the board is going to focus on is memberships. Because really, we, we sell only about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty individual and family memberships and then two corporate memberships. And then we get that the businesses in town get lots of requests. So, so we, we kind of want to focus for sure on increasing our, our membership base. And we see that as recurring revenue that once we, we sign up a member. To the, to that end, we changed the admission model. This was, I think, in my report last year, where it's, it's now admission by donation. And we, we see that as a very positive thing because there's less barriers to entry, really. So people will come and they will enjoy the museum, they'll see it, they'll see there's value there, they'll donate. And if they donate enough, they, they get a membership. So, so that's, that's the one thing. We really are, though, as I mentioned, want to focus on grants and grants that have some kind of support component, because then we can backcharge our, our staff time to the, to those grants and that helps us on the cost side, or the expense side, yeah.
So picking up on that idea, Mike, is that is that typically facility improvement grants or, or grants? You mentioned the Heritage Conservation Plan for the building. Is it, is it those grants that you would be focused on or are there other grants? Because I'm going to sound cynical, but it feels a bit like that's not sustainable taking on those heritage conservation projects only to get, you know, a small portion of that grant for your operating expenses.
Yeah, the, actually, another good example was that nineteen thousand dollar digitization grant. That did include some operating time in there. And we, we, that nineteen thousand dollars barely covered anything. So there is a lot more work, a lot more digitization to do. So, so we're looking at those type of grants too, just in terms of our archival activities and historical activities. So I think there are opportunities there too, yeah.
Thank you. And those maps you talked about, are they, are they of historical significance for the city as well, like in terms of the doc, documents that we could refer to in the future? Or are they more regional and?
Yeah, they're, they're a bit more of the, the East Kootenay.
Okay.
Because they cover the mines all from Coal Creek.
I see.
To going east. So they, they're quite general, but of course there's mines in Ferney here. So the, our future plan, actually, the other large grant we're going to need is once we get a handle on all those Crow's Nest Archives, we really want to put together a significant exhibit. So that's when we're, we're going to be talking to Glencore and Elk Valley Resources, because I think there's a lot of ties there. So that, there's just the artifacts that we've gotten notice, that we're gathering red dust in City Hall. We, we want to, you know, show those off and, and as well, just it, it'll be a, like all the archives with the photos and things, it's publicly accessible through the B C historical website, so.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Seeing nothing. Thanks very much, Mike. Appreciate the presentation. And now item six point four, the Ferney and District Arts Council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Louise Ferguson and I'm the Executive Director of the Ferney District Arts Council, which manages our home, the Art Station. Thank you for the opportunity to share an update on our past year, our financial position, future plans and some of the challenges that we face. You received in your package our recent A G M report from October fifth, which coincided with Art Station's thirty-five-year anniversary. This was a milestone that celebrated the original vision of creating a cultural hub for the community, welcoming inclusive space for creativity, connection and belonging. Thank you to the community members who joined us and to Mayor Milligan, Counselor Nixon and Counselor Hamilton for being part of that celebration. We also have our audited financial statements from our prior fiscal year, May twenty twenty-four to April twenty twenty-five and our current year budget, twenty-five to twenty-six. Our mandate is to provide arts and culture to the Elk Valley and its visitors. While the arts are our foundation, we operate as a community arts organization, meaning accessibility, inclusion and connection are essential to everything that we do. Our values are clear: access to the arts, this is physical, financial, across all ages and experience levels, fair payments to artists and cultural workers, which is especially vital in a community with such a high cost of living, and financial sustainability balanced with community service. We deliver a diverse range of programs. In the A G M report, it goes into more detail, but I'm just going to touch on a few. We do workshops and lessons in visual arts, performing arts, from pottery to painting, sewing, fiber arts and music. We have film screenings. We do eleven gallery exhibits every year. We have the craft fairs now and we actually have a new pop-up exhibit space in the cabin room. We also facilitate public art projects, including murals, the annual banner project and the winter art discovery. Of course, we have our Wednesday socials. We had again nine thousand attendees this summer. A good chunk of those are visitors to our town. I want to take a moment to thank the City of Ferney staff, the Streets Department, who did the road closures. They were very supportive this year and we really appreciated it. The Art Station is also home to arts and cultural groups, including potters, quilters, choir, visual arts and the Ferney Fiber Arts Guild. We operate now seven days a week. We just opened for seven days a week, which we're very excited about. And this averages about sixty-seven hours per week. This includes five late evenings and obviously the weekend to cater for everyone's schedules so everyone can come use the building. Most of our facilities and equipment, from the sewing machines to printing presses, are free to use. As it ensures that the arts remain accessible to everyone. A couple of statistics for you. Last year, we did forty-seven hundred studio appointments. These average about two and a half hours. We had over seven hundred adults participate in workshops and over seven hundred youth. We have ninety music students each term. We have the school and community tours. We had two hundred and eighteen youth our spring community tours. And over a thousand volunteer hours were contributed. A lot of that is the Wednesday socials. For our finances, we remain in a stable financial position. This has been achieved through proactive and sustainable management. We've implemented cost-cutting measures and diversified our revenue through sponsorships, donations and partnerships. Savings have been realized through bringing the cleaning services in-house and we've expanded our volunteer engagement. Despite the rising costs and reduced funding, we've maintained balanced budgets and we've replenished our reserves. The City of Ferney's annual contribution, forty thousand eight hundred, that's set through our five-year agreement. That represents less than ten percent of our total operating budget. We report on our agreement annually in February. This support primarily covers the building-related costs, such as cleaning, several maintenance and insurance, all of which obviously continue to increase. Important, importantly, this municipal funding enables us to qualify for B C Arts Council operating funding. We have to have matching funds from the city in order to qualify. For last year's budget, about thirty percent of it was grant revenue and the rest, the seventy percent, we earned ourselves. This is from programs, user fees, donations, our endowment fund and sponsorships. Looking to head, the Arts Council is just like refreshing our strategic priorities that's going to guide the next few years. A few key focus areas. We just did a fund development plan. And we're going to be implementing that, which includes the growth of our endowment fund. We have a plan to maintain our current services. We feel like we're in a strong position right now, so our plan is not to grow or decrease. Our plan is to maintain with a little bit of refinement. plan is not to grow or decrease. Our plan is to maintain with a little bit of refinement in there. We're going to plan to complete our cabin room and kitchen renovations, improve the accessibility and usability of those spaces for our programs. One of our big biggest challenges is the maintenance of the facility. It's a very big building and things cost a lot of money. So we're going to have a better plan for that facility maintenance and how we're going to fund it, building that into budgets. It is in a very good place right now, the building. So we want to keep it at that level and make those plans in advance. Of course, expanding the public art development, including some new murals in the works. And finally, we want to advocate for arts and cultural planning, public art policy, as we renew the O C P in Ferny. All of these things align with the council's strategic priorities. Of course, community well being and the livability of the community, quality of life. We foster inclusion, creativity, and belonging through accessible arts opportunities for all ages. And again, the asset management of the Art Station. We're very proud to be the caretakers of the Art Station. A lot of volunteer hours, a lot of staff hours goes into making sure that building remains in a good condition. And a lot of work has gone in over the last few years to get it to the state that it's in. And it's well loved by our users. So. And finally, the organizational excellence. As a community partner, we model transparency, collaboration, and fiscal responsibility, values that align with the city's own governance policies. The Art Station enhances the quality of life in Ferny by offering a space where creativity, connection, and community thrive. The city's ongoing operational and in-kind support is integral to our success, and the return on the investment is substantial, benefiting residents, visitors, and the broader local economy. Thank you for your continued partnership and for recognizing the arts as an essential part of Ferny to make it such a vibrant and lovable community.
Thank you so much. Council, questions, comments? Well, I'll jump in there. Louise, thank you. And thank you for the celebration, the thirty five year celebration. It was one, it was an excellent A G M, and it was very informative, and it was it was a lovely celebration. So well done. I did wonder, and I don't know, you have this endowment. And you talked about a your fund development plan. Is there? Is there an opportunity, and forgive me if this question is out of line, I don't think it is, but is there an opportunity to look at how that fund is invested and and see if there are opportunities to improve the investment plan of that fund so it has a yields a greater return for the Art Station?
So the current endowment?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we've actually did that work as part of our our plan. We got a consultant Columbia Basin Trust paid for it through the nonprofit program. And so that was one of the board's questions. So we actually investigated the endowment. It's actually at a very high rate of return. It's already much higher than the average. Because it's in shares. Robert Crisaffio, who donated it at the beginning, it was shares, and so it has grown. And we get like a set amount each year. So we're actually looking to grow the endowment. We're struggling to find one that gives us a good return. You need to put a lot in to get a decent amount back out. But that endowment has been so great for our organization, and it was such a great thing that he did for us. So that's where we want to grow it, because we're looking to the future. We're looking for the next thirty five years, and we want to become self sufficient. You know, that's not a tomorrow thing, but we have to start somewhere, and that's like part of that plan.
Okay, thank you. So you're alive to it. And it does, it sounds like currently it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Ramadas.
Thanks, Your Worship. I was going through the slides here, Louise, but forgive me if I'm getting this wrong. There's this slide that says Financial Report twenty three, twenty four, and then it says twenty five, twenty six. So I'm guessing then twenty four, twenty five, and twenty five, twenty six, like, are they the same year or was there a typing error here? Anyway, my question is, when I look at the twenty twenty five, twenty six projection, programming is about thirty seven percent is what you're saying. So was that was that a smaller portion of your revenue stream the previous year? Like, I don't have a comparative. I'm just wondering.
No, it's actually grown. The twenty three, twenty four firstly is a typo. I should say twenty four, twenty five. So you win a prize for catching that. Now, our programming has increased in revenues, like our workshops is what we make most of our direct funding off of. And that has increases year over year. So I don't have the exact numbers right now, but I can provide those to you, like if you want the comparison, but it goes up. And most of our programs, the unpaid programs are like neutral, so they don't they cover themselves.
Self sustaining?
Yes. Thank you.
And sorry, was it Robert Crisaffio who?
Yes.
So this is anecdotal. But I have a, this is a weird thing to bring up. I have a desktop from an elementary school desk that was in my home when I moved in. And Robert Crisaffio has carved his name in it.
Oh, no way.
If you're interested in it, you're welcome to.
Yeah, we actually went down a bit of a rabbit hole trying to find out more about him, because it's kind of, a lot of people don't know about the endowment, and a lot of people don't know the history. And so I was really interested to learn more about him. And we have a new saying at the board level, which is be like Robert.
Right.
So we'll we won't be like Robert carving names, but we will be like Robert giving endowments.
Well, and I had the opportunity to mention it to him before he passed away, but that was some years ago now, and he honestly had no interest in himself. I wouldn't I wouldn't blame you if you didn't want it. Counsel Ramadas.
Your Worship, I keep asking questions after the fact. There was one more thing I wanted to ask, like, did the loss of the business at the Art Center have any impact on your revenue stream here?
Yeah, it went up. Our revenues went up.
Actually went up.
Yeah, because the costs were higher than what we brought in revenue wise. And then the use of that space, we've been able to increase our revenues as a result from programming, revenue fees, facility rentals. We've just installed new exhibit space, so the bringing the cleaning in house was our biggest savings, and we weren't able to do that prior to having the supply.
What are the challenges? Sorry, Worship, one more question. What's the challenges with doing all these cleaning services in houses? It?
I mean, I don't think anyone really wants to clean. I will make a shout out to my staff. None of them blinked an eye when I said, we're doing the cleaning now. It's just the cost was so high to bring in external contractor, and we couldn't. Our programming, we've so busy, the building's so busy, and we have to do the cleaning when it makes sense. And having an external service just didn't make sense for that. So I mean, we've haven't increased our staff hours, so we're working that in. But we've been managing really well. And I think what's actually happened is people witnessed us do the cleaning, and now that it's visible, I think they're a bit more conscious of that previously you didn't see the cleaner because it was out of hours. Now, when everyone's seeing us cleaning, when we're saying tidy up after yourselves, they kind of, they know it's us doing it. So, you know, in an ideal world, if we had enough money, obviously, we'd hire cleaners, but for now, it's it's and we can do it to our standards too. So the building, I think, is cleaner as a result.
Thank you. Counsel Rody Kelly.
Thanks, Worship. A great job, Louise. I think your your numbers speak for themselves. So I think that's awesome. You mentioned about the kitchen and kind of doing work there, and I sort of that got me down the road of, do you get a lot of requests for like a wedding venue?
Yes, and that's actually our long term goal. We've been working towards that. The first step was the washrooms, and now having the kitchen. We want to be able to do it to bring us more revenue in. So that's part of our plan to have more direct revenues to cover the building costs. Like I said, the maintenance of the building is one of our biggest challenges, so we're trying to figure out ways to bring in money. And we think weddings is it, is that thing. So once we have the kitchen and the plan is for it to be that caterers can use it for weddings, and that was our biggest like stopping point. Previously, we had had a few weddings, but it's not easy when you don't have access to those facilities. And, you know, I was talking to Tourism Ferny about destination weddings, and, you know, there is a lack of wedding venues in town. We get a lot of inquiries. So, yeah, that's part of our plan. We just need to get that kitchen up and running, and it's just taking longer than we expected, more work than we expected, but we're getting there.
Excellent.
Thank you. Seeing nothing else? Thank you so much, Louise. Next is the Ferny Heritage Library. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for letting me speak to you this evening. I want to say I'm very excited to sit here tonight again and to talk to you about my favorite place in Ferny, the Ferny Heritage Library. I'm proud to lead, first of all, my name is Emma Dresler, and I'm the library director. I'm proud to lead a group of dedicated professionals and volunteers who work tirelessly to provide exceptional service and programs to our patrons, our visitors, and community members. In your package, the package you received by email, you received our annual report, which presented at our April A G M, our financial statements for twenty twenty four, and our draft budget for twenty twenty six. So you've received that. So after, if you have any questions about that, I'm, of course, able to answer them. I wanted to provide a quick summary of some of the information provided, as well as give a sense of where we're at this year and where we're going in the future. The theme of this evening's presentation is continued record growth in usage through people through the doors and circulation, programming numbers, et cetera. And how do we balance that with capacity? So that is always, I think it's what you've been hearing from everyone here this evening, it's it's the challenge for an easier growing community. And all of our services and organizations are being heavily used, and that's a good thing. We're not in a situation where we don't have people using our facilities, but it's challenging to meet the needs. For many years, I used to describe the Ferny Heritage Library as community living room. And I've kind of gone away from that because that term has become quite overused. But the term I'm using more and more to talk about is another term, which I think fits us better, and it's a third space. So we know people have their school, they have work, they have family, and they have another places like places that people can come to gather without expectations. In Europe, people might gather in an outside square. We have weather issues. And one of the places, the only place actually in the community where people can gather free of charge, anyone, come together, brush up against each other, is the Ferny Heritage Library. And our mission and our vision is to serve everyone in the community, and we really do do that. I would say to come on in on any particular day, and you'll see so many different types of people all engaging in a space that's welcoming and inclusive and where there are no barriers to entry. On an average day now, on a weekday, we see about four hundred people through our doors. Now, when you think about the permanent population of Ferny and even just our visitors, it's a huge number of people. Our weekend days now, we're getting regularly over two hundred people. Last Saturday, we had two hundred and sixty five people through the door. And when you think that we're only open for four hours, those are considerable numbers. At the same time as this, we're operating with less staff than we used to have. Now, thank goodness, we still have our volunteers. And staff are doing a very good job of managing the the numbers, but it is a continued challenge. I was looking at just a tiny little snapshot. We will have seniors who come in every single day to read the papers. We have a group of men who come in. Two groups of men in the morning and in the afternoon, who sit in the reading chairs, read their papers. We have children who do homework. We have people who come in to get access to things like printing their medical forms. And a specialist might send them something, and what they need to do is they have to download it, fill out the forms, scan it back. Many, many seniors are not able to do that type of work. They will come to the library. Someone new to the community will come in and need help onboarding the positions. Those are the type of things we do. I know recently several members of council and mayor were at U B C M. And I know that many of you maybe heard too much about libraries. Got my piano on from Kevin. But you will have heard many, many stories about the the challenges that are being faced in communities. And public libraries in British Columbia are places that have stepped up and are continuing to do this type of work. A positive spin is calling social strain is a term that's being used, rather than saying challenges, problems, we'll say strains. And Ferny is like every other place in the province. We're a little bit of a bubble, but we're experiencing it as well. We have people in the community who are under housed. We have people who are suffering from addiction and many other things. And they don't have a place to go except for our place. And I was at a meeting this morning with some people here, and I mentioned again about people who are under housed. And some people were a bit surprised to hear that or wasn't what they're thinking. It's like, yes, there are people in this community, and it's just something to think about. As you know, we operate, well, public libraries in British Columbia are supported by local governments. Also, all levels of government, primarily the local governments, which could be municipal and regional district funding, with a small percentage of funding from the provincial government. Provincial government funding tends to be for very specific programs, which are provincial in nature. Things like interlibrary loans, databases, these are the type of things that they support. The idea of a person from Ferny being able to go to another community in the province and have access to the service. The provincial government provides that kind of funding, but municipal governments provide the funding for actually providing service to the patrons. And that's how it's always been. And if you look at it, it's it's just how it goes. We are very fortunate that the library does receive support from the from the City of Ferny. And as you know, last year, we did have a receive an increase in our funding, which was the first time in several years, and we're so appreciative of that. At the same time, we also received an increase from the regional district. The regional district funding was quite a surprise, and you know how that happened, but they are finally accepting or collecting this amount that could collect with their bylaw. So decades and everything before, they've never done that. This twenty twenty five is the first year doing that. As I mentioned, provincial funding has remained static. It has not changed. There was a decrease in two thousand eight, and the number since two thousand nine has remained the same. At the same time, all libraries in British Columbia have been fortunate enough for the past few years to receive some additional funding related to COVID nineteen. It's been called provincial enhancement funds. So if you look at the budget for twenty twenty six, you see we are using enhancement funds. That will be the last of those enhancement funds. But you can see we've used that. Actually, it's not the last. There'll be eleven thousand of it left for twenty twenty seven, and they'll be used. So our budget for twenty twenty six assumes a four, six percent increase from the City of Ferny, like we discussed last year, a two percent increase from the regional district, and static funding from the province. Unfortunately, as those of you who are at U B C M learned, even though there was support for increasing provincial funding, the province, the minute the premier went asked, that his coffers were dry. So they did say that at this year, there would be no increase in funding for B C's libraries. We can hope for next year. We're continuing to work for that, but at this point, we do not expect a change for the budget there. Our mission is to be a library for everyone to learn, share, and build community, and I really feel we are doing that. As I mentioned before, we are a place where everyone could come in. Our service area doesn't just include the City of Ferny. It also includes areas A and B in the regional district. And a couple of things I'm excited to talk about, I just wanted to mention that we are expanding the type of service we offer to residents in the South Country. We've been working with several organizations out there, and we've started to get some momentum there, which is a really good thing, in particular with the Joffrey School. But some of the other service organizations out there too are making some movement. In addition, some really positive conversations with the tobacco planes. So again, it takes time, but we're getting some, to be able to increase our service, in particular, recognizing that regional district has improved their funding to us. And we track every interaction, and we know that large numbers of people from Area A and Area B do use the library as well. Every year, the demand for our services increase. We have, I work with an incredibly talented group of people, and we track every interaction. The provincial government asks for reports four times a year. And one of the reports, I've mentioned this before, has over two hundred data points that we report on. So we track things, and we know that all of our numbers, if we compare the first nine months of twenty twenty five to twenty twenty four, the numbers are up across the board. Now, last year, twenty twenty four was already a record year for us. I asked one of the staff members today to kind of take a look back. I thought I'll mention from two thousand nine and just go back even further. And every year, with the exception of two years during the pandemic, our numbers have increased. But what has increased so dramatically? People through the doors have increased, but circulation has more than doubled. And all of these numbers have increased without, well, without an increase in staff numbers. So it just, my team is working incredibly hard. Feedback and when we, when people are surveyed about things that are important to them, they consistently comment that the Fernie Heritage Library is a place where they feel safe and they feel welcome. Now, in a time in the world where we are an increasingly fractured society, where people feel less connected, it's incredibly important, and I know you recognize, but I feel like I need to say it. It's, okay, it's incredibly important to have places where people can connect and come together. You've shown you recognize the valuable work we do and I thank you for your support. Just as a little thing, I want to say, remember that investing in public libraries is investing in the wellbeing and the future of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dresler. Questions, comments from council? Councilor Adia Kelly.
Thank you so much, Emma. I know that you do very much for the community besides circulating books. So I am very appreciative of that. You and I had a talk about some of the reporting and I know it was causing like a significant amount of work for you and staff. And you were sort of hoping that maybe the province would standardize or streamline. Was there any progress there?
Thank you for asking me that. There has been a little bit of progress there. I was actually on a session today with a bunch of library directors and I was happy to hear they, we've asked for, I had mentioned to Councilor Adia Kelly, the challenge with the amount of metrics that we have to report on and a changing landscape all the time. We want to be able to compare apples to apples, just put it simply. And our reports also involve written reports as well and when they're changing metrics. And we had asked for, and we've been doing some advocacy work with the province to get some more consistency and standardization and also to cut it down a little bit. So there has been some movement there. And one of the things they've done, which is, has made a tiny bit of a difference as well, is they're actually pulling some of the numbers themselves, which is helpful because many of us use, it's called an integrated library system that we share across many of the libraries. And at least those numbers, there's consistency and we're not having to pull those ones. Thank you.
Other questions?
That's nice to hear that there's a little progress.
Yes.
Seeing none, I just wanted to comment, Emma, to your, your point about UBCM and maybe hearing too much about libraries. I don't, I don't think we can hear too much about libraries or any of these institutions, really. I think many of us attended, there was a, a plenary on, on libraries and the difficulties they're facing. Not just funding difficulties, but the change in almost the social contract with libraries, given the change in our communities. And, and you said, we're, we're fortunate, we're in a bit of a bubble. We, we have maybe an under housed population, but, but not a significant unhoused population. And, and some of those libraries really, really struggle. It was a, it did not fall on deaf ears. As you said, there was a pitch directly to the premier. But yeah, the answer was pretty flat, that the, the well is dry. But it doesn't mean we won't keep advocating for, for the support for libraries because it's, just as I say, there's such a significant hub for, for, social hub for, across our province.
Thank you, Mayor Milligan. And it is one of the things I always talk to the team before I come. And I have been asking people to, whichever ones do, we have this, a Google Doc, we use Google a lot. And we have a wonderful doc where people are sharing anecdotes. And I was asking people, and we're just thinking about the very different, there's so many different things that happen in a day and you do not realize if you're living in a comfortable home and you have secure internet and you don't have to think about many of these things. Well, we are that place where people can still do that. And you don't think about the fact if, if you're trying to apply for a job and you, you don't even have the starting point. We sometimes have people come in who especially have been out for quite a few years and they're trying to get back in, might not even understand, so to open a window, what does that mean? So it's, it's, you know, people are at different levels and, and need having to save place that is also with free internet all the time.
Yeah. And, and on that note, just yesterday, there was a young fellow, a new Canadian on the steps of City Hall, looking for a place to print his resume to apply. And so I was able to send him to the library.
Good.
Councilor Mackenzie.
Thank you, worship. Thanks for the presentation. I just wanted to follow up along a little bit with the mayor's comments about UBCM because I was to facilitate the plenary session there and it was, quite frankly, it was very eye opening. One of the presenters started her presentation with the first time someone died in our library. And the amount of social buffering that occurs in the library that would otherwise fall through to other organizations is profound. And so there's no, all the money that is spent there is money savings from other organizations within the community. It's, it's, it's really remarkable. We can't do without it. So thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you. And you know, I have to say, quite a few members of my team that I get to work with are watching tonight and they will be very happy to hear you say that. Because that is one of the things that if to be seen and to recognize that you, you do actually see that that work is being done. It's, that will make some people very happy, I have to say. Thank you.
Councilor Hamblin.
Thank you. I just want to echo yours and Councilor Mackazik's comments about how eye opening it was to hear the issues that libraries are facing. And it's not lending books, it's not being, it's not always being a resource to print a resume off or, you know, kind of being your, your stationers or access to the internet. But, you know, we are, as you said, we're very fortunate, we're in a bit of a bubble here. We're not facing a lot of the societal strains, to use your words, that many other libraries are facing. Thankfully, our library hasn't dealt with any overdoses, let alone multiple.
No, we've had two while I've been here. We've had two.
I stand corrected then. So yeah, I don't think I will ever tire of attending UBCM, attending information sessions on what the libraries are doing. And thank you and your team for everything that you do.
Thank you very much.
And Councilor Adia Kelly.
I just did want to add actually that our library isn't immune to the effects of social strains and has experienced what I would call critical incident. And I think most others would as well. So I don't, although I'm grateful that we're not facing some of the strains that as badly, I don't want us to get complacent, right? There, there is a lot of social work that goes on at the library here as well. So I'd like to point out that Emma and the staff do face that. So thank you, Emma.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dresler. Very much appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
And I wanted to say thank you to all of you who've presented this evening. The, the services you provide to the community are invaluable. And many of you have touched on it, but it really does improve our quality of life in the city of Fernie. So we're very grateful to the work you do. So thank you for coming this evening. And with that, I think we will take a five minute recess or bio break, Ms. Rose, if that's okay. And thank you. And you don't have to hang around if you don't want to. This is your one minute warning? Whenever you're ready, Ms. Rhodes. Thank you and welcome back. We begin with item 7.1, discretionary grants fund review report from our deputy director of finance. Ms. Mullin, welcome.
Good evening, council, mayor and council. Tonight, I'm here to further the discussion about the discretionary grant program, specifically around the eligibility criteria. In November of last year, the discretionary grants committee met to review applications. And during those discussions, the discretionary grants committee expressed interest in reviewing the program for the 2026 intake year. Staff brought this item forward to council in July 2025. And both council and members of the public emphasized the positive impact of this fund on community groups. And the consensus was the program would continue into future years. However, one of the main limiting factors in the current policy is that the two out of the five year eligibility rule. This is where a group cannot receive funds in more than two of the five years. Since implementation of the discretionary grants program in 2019, there have been two instances where council has made an exception to this eligibility requirement. Since the eligibility requirement is explicitly stated in the policy, it's probably likely that the community groups that have received funding in two of the five years do not apply to the program because they know they will be immediately ineligible. But in some cases, these organizations may be, may have newer expanded initiatives. So therefore, by removing this requirement, it would allow the discretionary grants committee to make the ultimate decision on who is to receive the funding. In my report this evening, I have included the draft amended policy that proposes removing the two out of five year eligibility requirement to allow for greater flexibility and support for evolving community programs. In addition, the policy states a deadline of October 31st. But with the timing of this report, we would like to extend the deadline for the 2026 intake to November 30th. Corporate Officer McLeary has prepared a staff recommendation for extension of the deadline. And we'll incorporate any other items from our discussion here tonight. So I would be pleased to discuss the eligibility requirement and any other questions or proposed amendments that council has in relation to the discretionary grants policy.
Thank you, Ms. Mullin. Councilor Mackazik.
Thank you, worship. I have two comments that I'd like to make on this proposal. The first one is that, and I think this is worth a discussion with staff and with the rest of council about the number three requirement, which is that grant applications to be able to demonstrate active fundraising efforts to support blah, blah, blah. The city of Fernie grant should not be considered as the primary source of funding for the organization. I'm not sure if it should be removed or reworded, but I think as we heard from a number of the organizations tonight, the necessity for city funding to achieve matching funds, this becomes a multiplicative effect. But there's no way that they can be certain of that at the time that they're applying. And so I think either it needs to be reworded or removed. And as Ms. Mullin said, either leave it in the hands and the discretion of the committee to decide whether or not that grant is appropriate use of city money with what the other work that they're doing or change that language so that it says, you know, proof of other grant applications having been made is sufficient or something to that effect. So that, that's the first comment that I want to make. And then the second comment that I'd like to make is that there was quite a bit of discussion within the committee about creating the opportunity for two intakes for the grant funding at different times during the year. And that was primarily driven, I, at the time, but not completely, but primarily driven by the ensuring that there's an opportunity, especially for youth, school and athletic groups and so on, to have a, have an opportunity to, to take advantage of it. So those, I think those are the two things that I would, two changes that I would like to see in some fashion put into this particular process, but I'd welcome any discussion.
Comments? Councilor Ramonis?
Sorry, worship. I was, I was a little distracted. I was looking at something else. Can I please ask councillor to repeat what you just said? I'm really sorry.
No, no, that's fine. Yeah. So the first, the first comment that I want to make was that under the rules of application number three, that contains a line about the city of Fernie grant should not be considered as the primary source of funding for the organization. My concern is that there, we have a number of organizations who are dependent upon the city for any granting in order to create a matching fund situation as a multiplier. And so I would hate to think, okay, they're going to be looking for that in the future. They come to us and apply. They haven't actually applied yet because they need our funds in order to do that. And so I think that places an unfortunate restriction on, on, on that. And so I, I feel like that's the kind of And so I, I feel like that's the kind of judgment that the granting committee could decide. Is this, is this organization putting the effort in to find the money that they need from other places? Or are they just coming here and make the decision that way? And then the second item was with regards to creating two intakes throughout the year rather than one. And that was like perhaps a spring and a fall intake. And that was to provide greater opportunities for youth groups that don't, they're not set up yet for what they want. While we're doing the, the grant intake. And so later in the year, like in the spring, for example, they might be able to do.
Counselor Audie Kelly?
Thanks, your worship. I would like to speak in support of what Counselor McIsaac has said. Maybe counselor, that sentence could just be struck and leave it at, you know, should be able to demonstrate active fundraising efforts. That sentence and take the other one out because I agree with you. It also has been my experience as being a member of that committee that it could be beneficial and open the opportunity to a more wide audience, so to speak, if we did have two intakes. And I do support taking out the two and five. Because if it is something brand new, because generally speaking, these are smaller grants that, you know, really are, are seed money that might be getting a new project going for a small group that they otherwise couldn't, you know, get off the ground. So I think, you know, the committee could have the discretion and then we bring it to the wider council for everybody's opinion.
Thank you. Counselor Chusman.
I certainly agree about the two intakes. That makes a lot of sense, having been with organizations applying for grants before. Sometimes the deadlines and timing of things is really tough. Pardon me. Was on the fence about the initial change there that Counselor McIsaac mentioned, but it, it makes sense to me. Striking that line does. So yeah, I'm good with those changes.
Yeah, I can't disagree. Counselor Ramonis?
One final thing, your worship, I, I I'm in support of all the discussions here that is going on here, but just, just a word of caution. I don't know how to kind of answer this question in my own head. I understand, you know, the, like I've been on the committee in the last year also, and I know it is undersubscribed at times. And we want to like have more participants apply into it. The only word of caution dropping this two, five rule is again, like the intention here is that this funding opportunity is almost like a seed month, right? And we shouldn't almost, if there are same organizations coming back again over and over, it just, the shouldn't be seen as, as a continuous funding stream rather than something that actually helps someone to get off the ground in the beginning. So I don't know, like that's the only thing that I have in mind. Again, for the largest part, I'm, I'm in support of this, that one portion I don't know how to answer.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that change is, as Counselor Audia Kelly has suggested, striking that sentence removes any discretion from the granting committee to, to look at the applicants, whether they've applied first time, second time, third time. Counselor McIsaac?
Thank you, worship. Yeah, I'd like to speak to that Counselor Ramonis's point because I, I do feel that there is risk of the city becoming like the repeat funder year after year after year, which doesn't encourage organizations to become self-sufficient.
Yeah.
Right? So, but I, rather than making a hard and fast rule, I like giving the committee the discretion. But I think perhaps it's part of the communication to the potential grant application, which is that be aware that the granting committee may favor new organizations without a strong track record in order to support their, their progress over organizations which have a long track record of, you know, something, language of that effect.
Right.
That communicates to, to them that, you know, we're, we're going to be looking, we expect to be a seed organization, not a perpetual funding organization. Yeah.
Counselor Hamilton?
Yeah. And just to that same effect, I think we need to keep in the back of our mind too, the rationale and the reason why this language was originally put in the policy was to avoid that becoming the operating fund for smaller organizations and not putting any onus or impetus on them to go and find additional funding sources. Two out of five years was, okay, we can, we can be some seed funds or we can be an inconsistent funding mechanism, but you shouldn't rely on us year after year. So having implemented it and seeing that there's some challenges in the right word, but some improvements to the policy can be made. I'm in support of updating the language around it. But yeah, I think we just need to keep in mind why that language was put in in the first place.
Yeah. And I like the thinking about, about putting it in the application process that it makes it clear. You know, having, having administered a community investment program, you do end up being a stop of first resort often. And, and consequently, when you choose not to fund some small organizations, it can be the death of them. So I think that we definitely want to avoid that. Counselor Chusman?
Thank you, Mayor Milligan. You've all more or less said what I intended to say, but I'll add a coat of paint as well. No, I think that increasing the discretion that the committee has is a good thing, provided that the organizations applying have it clearly communicated that this is not to be baseline funding. Never the intent. So as long as that exists somewhere upfront, I'm totally happy with those changes.
Thank you. Ms. Mullen, you, you talked about two eligibility exceptions where the, the granting committee chose to ignore the two and five rule. Do we have a sense of how often people reapply anyway?
There's typically like one or two organizations that will apply that are ineligible. But I do have a sense that maybe some other organizations don't apply because they know they're ineligible. So it, I guess maybe makes a little bit of an unfair playing field for some people that apply regardless. And then some people that don't apply. Because yeah, I think last year intake, we had an exception and then I think the other year was 2022.
Okay, thank you. And just from a staff sort of practicality point of view, is, is two intakes, is that create a significant amount of increase of work or is it fairly benign? I don't know how to ask that question necessarily, but.
Well, I think it just, it's a collaborative effort. So communications would have an aspect of it with putting out the postings for the applications. And then myself in the finance department is the one that takes in all the applications and prepares all materials for the meetings. And then we have a meeting and then I also have to come to council for the approval. So it does add. Yeah, it definitely does. And then, and we also have a report that everyone has to prepare before they can be eligible for the next intake. So it's like the final report. So if anybody's applying in the spring and they also imply in the fall potentially, they would, it would be a shorter period of time for them to expend the money and then us also receive the final report.
Right. Counselor Hamilton?
Just occurred to me based on that last comment that if we are going to go to two intakes a year, does it, would there be value in us adding, adding some language to the policy that your, and the entity is only eligible once a year? So that somebody might not, wouldn't be able to come spring and fall. They, they have to choose.
I guess that makes, that makes sense to me. Counselor Chusman?
In that scenario, if somebody didn't get the grant in spring and then decided to reapply and fall, would that be viewed the same as? You know, I mean.
That's a fair question. Yeah. Depends on the nature, I guess, of the application and, and why they weren't accepted the first time. And yeah, I don't know. You can't cover every vagary in this.
If I may, my personal thought is if you've applied and you don't get it, and why wouldn't you be able to reapply? But you, if you apply and are granted, you're ineligible to apply.
That makes sense to me. Yeah. And I, and you know, it would ultimately fall presumably to Mr. Bornowski and Mr. Burditt as to whether the, on the surface, the community benefit outweighs the potential increased workload. I guess ultimately from my perspective, but I don't have a sense of that. So I'd have to leave it in your capable hands to, to determine if that was in fact the case. They're whispering back and forth.
Again, Mayor and Council, it's approximately a $5,000 expense. The exact figure is in one of the earlier reports and I'm struggling to pull it up. But it is essentially just doubling the program cost. It doubles the program management cost. It's two communication campaigns, two special meetings with council, two report packages, two processes of receiving, collating, developing. And so if council sees that as a significant benefit to the community, it just has to understand that it's essentially doubling the cost of the program to somewhere in the neighborhood of, I would say $10,000 is a general guess.
Yeah, no kidding. Counselor Audie Kelly?
Yeah, just putting into perspective that we have a $14,400 budget.
A $10,000 administration cost. Sorry, can we have the conversation on microphone?
It's a non-cash expense, your worship. I mean CFO can answer to that better than I can, but I'm pretty sure it's non-cash.
Mr. Burditt?
Yeah, Counselor Ramonis is right. It's just a way to measure the staff time.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Additional time.
Yeah, additional time. Fair. Counselor Hamilton?
I agree that it's a non-cash expense, but it's time taken away from another project or other priorities. So it's all where we.
It is money spent. Yeah. Yeah. Counselor McIsaac?
Thank you, worship. It occurs to me that it might be possible to reduce the expense a little bit by, there only really needs to be one communication that goes out at the beginning of the year that says, these are the two intake times apply. Right? Rather than having to do it twice.
That feels doable from my perspective.
But I, I, I will defer to the experts in communication, of course, about what, whether or not that's appropriate, but. But yeah.
Mr. Bornowski?
In our experience, if you have an intake, you need to advertise around the intake. We don't need to redevelop it, to design it, to change it, update it for two intakes, but it'll need two distinct communication campaigns to generate the same as you would for any recruitment or, or fundraising campaign. You just need to do it twice. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I appreciate Counselor Audie Kelly's comment about the, the value of the program and the value of the cost of running it. But I do think it does bring value to the community. From my perspective, I think it's worth it to, to at least try two intake periods and see how it unfolds. Did you, do you have all your questions answered, Ms. Mullen, or do you have any more questions for council?
No, I don't have any more questions, but can I just quickly summarize what?
Yeah.
The discussion, just so I know for going back. So number three criteria, remove and just have active fundraising, show active fundraising efforts. Looking to do two intakes per year, a spring and the fall. Is there a timing that is specific that people are thinking of or kind of leave it in our hands to? I think the youth programs was kind of the one, so maybe.
I was thinking around school times, whatever, vacations.
Yeah. So you know, sort of October and then potentially March, I would think.
And then.
Ballpark.
And just then through the application process, we would have some communication around favoring potentially new organizations over longstanding recipients of the awards.
Perfect.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Mullen.
Just once, do we need the recommendation, staff recommendation for the extension of the?
Thank you. Sorry.
Okay.
So the staff recommendation is that committee directs staff to extend the date comma. That applications for discretionary grants and aid are due comma to 4:30 PM on November the 30th, 2025. And that staff be directed to include the feedback provided by committee in the committee of the whole meeting of October 21, 25, 2025 and the discretionary grants policy CP 201904 and bring back the policy as amended for approval at a future council meeting.
Mover? Counselor Hamilton, seconded by Counselor McIsaac. Any further discussion? Counselor Chusman?
Yeah, moving forward, if we notice that the second intake isn't working, it's entirely within council's purview to just turn it back to one.
Yeah. With that, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mullen. Appreciate it. Item seven point two, snow removal, 2024, 2025 recap and look ahead. Report from our manager of public works. Welcome, Ms. Campbell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Brianna Campbell. I'm the manager of Public Works here. For those of you that I haven't met yet, thanks for your time tonight. I'll be providing a recap of our 2024, 2025 snow removal season and share what's planned for the season ahead, 2025, 2026. All right. So I started here with our established service levels. This is something that you would have seen in the snow and ice control policy. This slide shows how much snow removal response scales with the snowfall amounts. So you'll see this, a light snowfall between zero and three centimeters. Our basic response is very minimal with equipment, with minimal equipment to keep the priority roads and sidewalks clear and safe. For a snowfall between three and five centimeters, we're using increased sanding and plowing to maintain service levels on key routes. And then accumulation of five centimeters or more, that's our full plow operation. And so all equipment is on deck on those full plow operation days with 14 staff. And this includes the downtown center plow with the windrow removal and the seniors program. The goal is to ensure safety and accessibility while prioritizing critical areas during each type of snow event. When it snows in the city of Fernie, oh, thank you. When it snows here, operating staff work hard clearing the roads. And that includes 71 kilometers of streets and laneways, 15 kilometers of sidewalks and 11 kilometers of pathways and trails throughout town. Our next one here. There we go. So this is our plow roots overview map. The city is divided into five areas. And these five areas also include priority roads that are prioritized for snow clearing. Our area one is right in the center there. That's our downtown main town area. Area two is the remainder of main town and the annex. Area three is Ridgemont, Silver Ridge, Coal Creek and Montane. Area four is Mount View, Castle Mountain, Park Crescent and Park Lane. And area five is Parkland Alpine Trails, Ghost Rider Industrial Area, the Cedars Riverside and West Fernie.
So just for clarity for the folks at home.
Yeah.
Those are just areas, not priorities.
Yes, yes. And you'll see, I know it's small, but the red and the blue is, the red is the priority roads and the blue is the priority two.
Thank you. I just didn't want people making assumptions.
For sure. No, that's great. Appreciate it. So the second map here is our commercial alley plow routes or and lane plow route overview. Our commercial alleys are cleared during only the full plow cycles so that five centimeters or more accumulation. Residential alleys are not included in our commercial alley plowing. And you'll see the main town area here. And again, it's small apologies, but the main town is the red dotted lines there. And that's priority one. And those downtown alleys are cleared in coordination with this, with the downtown center plow. And then in the annex areas, priority two in the blue dotted line in the annex there. And those alleys are completed once the downtown is complete. So this is quite a. So this is quite a bit of information, I, I understand, but I did want to share a bit of an overview of our equipment requirements for each area. Our snow removal plan is organized into the five areas as noted and each is uh, has its dedicated equipment for efficiency. And so our area one, this requires our most resources, clearly. Uh, we have graders, loaders, snow blower, haul trucks and flaggers for the windrow removal. And then areas two through five, each are assigned a grader, a loader with a wing plow to handle the residential and the industrial routes. And our commercial alleys again are cleared during that full plow cycle and using the same equipment as those downtown operations. This approach ensures the right equipment is deployed and where it's needed most and minimizes delays maintaining service levels during those heavy snow events. Uh, I wanted to share just a bit of a recap of the winter weather last year, uh, so 2024, 25. Our largest snowfall was 50 centimeters accumulated over November 18th to 23rd, so pretty early on in the year for that biggest snowfall. Our full plow events, uh, we had 12 of those last season. That was down from 18 the previous year before. And our overnight snowfalls, uh, we had 24 of them and slightly up from 22 from this previous season. So I do want to note that even though there were uh fewer full plow events, our crews actually spent more time in equipment last season. And uh, this was more so because of the smaller, the smaller snowfalls that accumulated during the daytime, which isn't tracked here. Um, and during those daytime work week hours as well. So that requires repeated sanding, spot plowing, and this means our operators are out uh frequently for extended periods, just making sure our roads and our sidewalks, our pathways are safe. And we also brought on the city, uh, pardon me, uh, the city brought on West Ferny snow clearing internally last year, which added about 4.7 K to our operators' routes. So we have our towing and ticketing statistics here. Uh, we're obviously working closely with bylaw each season and this compares the towing and ticketing between the last two winter seasons. You'll see that 2024, or sorry, 2023, 24, we had 69 vehicles towed and 32 tickets issued. And then kind of the opposite in the last season, 20, in 2024 and 25, uh, we had 31 vehicles towed and 51 tickets issued. So why the change? There were fewer full plow events last season, as mentioned in the previous slide, and uh, we call out bylaw on those full plow events to help with the vehicle towing and the ticketing. So with the fewer flow, full plows, there is fewer events to have bylaw out doing that. And we had limited, and this is consistent, there's limited tow truck availability when we need them. So this also plays a role in variability. Yeah.
Counselor McKaisik?
Thank you, Worship. I think I'm a little dismayed to hear those numbers because the implication is that the message isn't getting out there. Where the illegal parking isn't improving, which if, if the reason that the number of vehicles towed has gone down is because we're not doing many full plows as opposed to there's not as many cars parked illegally, that feels problematic. So do we need to, sorry?
I was gonna say, this is only indicative of that, that full plow event.
No, no, I, I understand, but the problem is, is when we get to a full plow event, the streets are covered in snow and we need to plow them and clear them away, but now there are cars parked there. There are cars parked there three days before when we got two centimeters of snow, but we didn't ticket them, we didn't tow them, we didn't move them, and now they're in the way during the full plow. So not that I'm suggesting that necessarily every time a snowflake hits the ground and there's a car parked in the street that we start calling somebody. But it does suggest that either more communication or uh, uh, a reevaluation of ticketing prices or costs, et cetera, et cetera, might be, might be warranted. If, if the message is not um resulting in uh less uh cars being parked on the street, because that presents a significant time cost to stop everybody in the community is suffering at not getting their snow cleared as quickly because there are a few scofflaws who will not move their cars. So, I mean, I would propose we don't allow parking on the street at all. That might be a bit rash. Um, but um, but yeah, I, I just wanted to mention, I, I do feel like some work still needs to be done there in order to reduce the amount of uh problems associated with it. Thank you.
Any further comments on that topic, Ms. Campbell?
Uh, not for me at this time, but it will certainly be taken into account.
Thank you. Counselor Ramadas?
I have the exact opposite of you here, Your Worship. I'm seeing it very differently and I, I just think that uh, two things, right? One is the data driven and just my own personal experience sitting here and, you know, hearing from the community. I just feel like the number of complaints coming to me as a counselor has reduced. And there are actually people who are saying, you know, the snow clearing has gotten better from last year. Anyway, that's the subjective part, but even on the data itself, I'm just seeing this as us being more proactive and issuing tickets and we are really enforcing uh. Yeah, but again, that's the vagaries of the nature, you know? If there is more full plow happening next year, I'm guessing if the tickets issued trend goes up like the way it is, people are going to get that message and will be clearing their vehicles from the, from their parking. Anyway.
Yeah, and, and in conversation with bylaw, there was some indication that uh, like some areas remain problematic.
Yeah.
I think the far end of Second Avenue is a particular challenge sometimes. But, you know, bylaw indicated there was one street in Ridgemont that they towed a couple of vehicles, the next, then, and it was good for the rest of the season.
Yeah.
Um, so there is, uh, yeah, the message gets out there pretty quick.
Yeah, and, and, and I, don't get me wrong, I still hear one or two, you know, really uh, I don't know what the word you used, counselor, but you know.
Scofflaws?
Yeah, exactly. We still hear that, but I think that, that has reduced and, and this is a good indicator that, you know, we are tightening and, you know, the whole operations is getting better. Kudos to the team here.
Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you. Actually, I had a coffee this morning with a community member and um, the two things he conveyed to me were A, how much better the plowing is, but B, how frustrated he still is with people leaving their vehicles parked on the street and wondering if there was another mechanism for ticketing, for towing that wasn't complaint driven. Um, as our bylaw is typically complaint driven, so I'm, I, I don't have a, told him I didn't have a solution, but I think it's certainly worth a discussion at some point in the near future as to whether we revisit our ticketing prices or frequency or, or how we deal with that for parking, because we haven't changed the rules in a long time. And if people still are not obeying them, then it's either the consequence is inconsequential in their mind or I honestly don't know what the alternative is.
It certainly suggests it's not inconsequential. I've heard some of the people coming to collect their vehicles at the front desk in there. It is, has a significant impact. Mr. Bornowski?
It's true to council, if I can, just some clarifying notes that I'm getting from colleagues uh, as we listen to the debate. Bylaws is, is doing more snow enforcement on non-plow days during regular daytime hours. It has resulted in more um, ticketing outside of full plow days and anecdotally um, participation in good behavior or compliance um, in some areas and absolutely not in others. And I will attest to the mayor's comment, definitely some very upset people who got a ticket for parking in a no parking zone on a non-full plow day because the pattern typically was roll the dice. If it's not snowing, you might get away with it, but once a full plow comes, you better be on it. And that has slowed our response down significantly. Further, just to clarify, we do have escalating fines. So your first offense is $75. Second offense within 12 months is 150. Um, we do need to work on how we track first and second offenses. Sometimes when you're out in the field, ticketing um, in an area, you don't have time to get back to base, check for that first offense, but yeah, there are some escalating fines and um, thank you. That's it.
Counsel Schuesman?
Well, it's a good thing I don't run plows, because I just plow people in lots. Um, so I, to me, I mean, there's a few ways to look at this. It seems heartening actually that there's more tickets and less towing. That seems good. I mean, that seems to indicate that people are actually learning. And I mean, on that note, I've been informed by an irate citizen that uh, people have certainly learned what our bylaw hours are. And uh, regardless of what hours people are plowing, they, they know when they will not get tickets in certain areas. So people do pay attention to these things.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Please carry on.
Great, well, um, basically our, our key takeaway, I think, from this one uh, operationally is we're aiming to prioritize, prioritize that education piece. That's, that's very important, I agree. And enforcement to keep the roads clear and safe. And obviously that allows our operators to do their jobs safely and efficiently as well. So we're working closely with bylaw on that one. The next slide here is our request for service and our, our senior windrow program numbers. And our request for services were up from the previous year at 177, previously at 141 the season before. And the senior windrow program remains, uh, or pardon me, uh, we had 175 applicants up from 167 the previous season. And that windrow program, uh, it's, it's a significant accessibility concern for, for many people. And so the, the program for everyone's knowledge is open to residents of Ferny who are 65 eight, years of age or older and people with disabilities. And um, there is an application online, of course, and our policy requires clearing within the 48 hours for that program of a full plow. And here's our budget overview of the last two seasons. Uh, and so in 2023, 24, we were at about 100, or $804,000. And our 2024, 2025 budget landed at about $963,000. These costs include operational, uh, operational costs, staff wages and overtime between November 1st, our snow season start and April 30th, the, the end date as well. So the increased cost seen in the last year is largely reflective of our equipment cost allocation. And that was a result of an increase in equipment rates in the 2024, 2025 season and an increase in equipment usage as well. This was paired with an increase in salary costs because we brought on one more seasonal worker last season due to taking on West Ferny. And they were also, uh, there were some slightly offset by some decreases in the external contracts due to the removal of West Ferny. And operating supplies were down slightly and overtime was actually down slightly as well, likely due to those fewer full plows.
Counselor Hamilton and then Counselor Ramadas?
I think Ms. Campbell will actually just answer my question with her very last statement there. I was gonna ask about the correlation between overtime and staffing levels. And I know it's a really complex calculation with taking on West Ferny and reducing contractor hours, but I'm just curious if we are seeing um, a net benefit in hours, uh, staff hours with adding more employees and reducing overtime, like, are, are, are we past the breaking point where it makes sense to hire more people versus bill out more overtime?
So um, we had spent on average, oh, we had the contract for West Ferny for three, three seasons. And on average, we were spending about 100,000 a year on the foothills um, contract. And the difference this, these, between these two seasons is about 159,000. Um, and so while we did take on a new seasonal employee, there are other reasons for that increased cost as well. Crews are spending a lot more time improving road conditions uh, between those major snowfall events. And the sanders are, are being deployed more frequently in the previous, uh, more, more frequently than previous years. And that's addressing those icy conditions. This requires additional labor and fuel, um, material costs. We're, we're overall taking a more proactive approach, I believe. And I, I think that's what reflects that, that increase there.
Further?
So would it be fair based on that um, answer that we're getting an increased service for our unit? Like, yes, we are spending more, but we are, yeah, availability usage is improving?
I believe so. This will be my first season in, in the role that I'm in. So um, I, I believe so. I can certainly look into that more if you'd like me to.
Counsel Ramadas?
It's a related question, Your Worship, and this is probably more to the CFO here, right? I, CFO, if I remember it right, this time last year, you had spoken something about better allocation to equipment, like is, is that true or has that got any effect to this? What I'm trying to say is we have a better measurement system now than before and that is why this delta is showing up along with increased actual expenses too?
Uh, yeah, that's mostly right. I mean, each piece of equipment that we have has, call it a blue book hourly rate and that gets updated in the system annually. That's, that's the main driver of these, of this allocation. So we have one department in our books, that's our equipment um, department. And then there's a large credit in that department that allocates what our best estimate is to each of the departments that uses the equipment. And then whenever an operator charges an hour to that piece, it'll book an actual in the, in, in the snow removal department, so. And these hourly rates go up every year, obviously. The idea is that these hourly rates are supposed to fund, um, are supposed to give us an idea of how we fund our replacement reserve. And as we'll get into in budget, our contribution to that reserve has kind of largely remained flat the last few years. So it is something that we'll have to spend some time on in budget, especially as we get into reserves. But that's, that's the gist of how that works.
Thank you. Carry on.
So I'll move into our ongoing challenges, lessons learned from our 2024, 2025 season. Um, as we discussed already, illegally parked vehicles continue to be an ongoing challenge, operational challenge. Uh, they obviously delay plowing efforts, narrow roadways, they reduce service levels and operators. And if operators determine there isn't enough room to pass the vehicle safely, they do have to leave that spot uncleared. And so our mitigation measures is to continue with the communication department uh, through announcements during those full plow events. Educational and social media awareness campaigns with our communications department. There's a fourth quarter mail out that goes out to all residents to clearly define where they can and cannot park. And that will be going out shortly. And then of course, our bylaw enforcement. So bylaw is notified whenever a, a full plow is called. And uh, they start, you know, I, I, they start at 4:00 AM when we do and I actually think they start a little bit earlier, so to, to get ahead of the game. So uh, we're working with them closely as well.
Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you, I don't mean to interrupt with this thought that just popped into my mind, but like just thinking of windrow timing, illegally parked cars and Counselor McKaisik's comment about no parking on the street in the winter and the comment about, you know, if there's too many cars parked and they just abandon it. Have we ever done a calculation and, or an analysis of how much more efficient the plow drivers could be if there was no cars on the street? Like, you know, just a straight drive up and down to directions, do it all? Would that be a significant increase in efficiency?
Not that I'm aware of, that, that hasn't been looked into, but again, um, I'm not sure if anyone else has anyone to, anything to say about that?
I, I don't think it's been, I don't think it's been like analyzed. I, I think anecdotally, we know how much more quickly and effectively you can run without obstacles in your way, but no.
And just the nature of the historic, but you know, practice both of parking and of plowing in this community, it, it, uh, it remains a challenge.
If I can, counsel, um, further, the historic nature of the community itself means that there is a lot of, there are a lot. If I can counsel further, the historic nature of the community itself means that there is a lot of, there are a lot of residential roads where people don't have vehicle storage off street. Or if they do have vehicle storage off street, it's down an alley that we can't clear effectively all winter long because unfortunately, using gravity wastewater, those wastewater mains are close to the surface and without insulation, they might freeze or water might freeze just because of the, the way the valley and the floodplain works.
So the second one that's listed here is frozen winter sand that has been an ongoing challenge. And we found in the past that uncovered sand has required over 100 hours annually, on average, over the past three years for loading and unloading due to it being frozen. They're having to chip away at it and spend more time loading it into their vehicle. Frozen sand also affects the ability to apply it evenly, reducing its effectiveness. So our mitigation for this, it's very exciting. It's happening right now. Our construction of our our shelter for the winter sand storage, this will really help our operators. And that's, I think it was last week it started. So yeah, the foundation at least. So that's been exciting. The the next one here, the snow deposited from driveways and sidewalks onto roads. Residents placing snow from their private driveways and from sidewalks onto already plowed road, roads creates hazards and disrupts operations. So again, it's that continued education piece that we're working on here. Enforcement of relevant bylaws. Verbal abuse towards staff. Verbal abuse has trended downwards, thankfully, over the last few years. But it continues to be an interference to the operators operations and is unsafe when there's interference of pedestrians approaching their, their plows and their equipment while doing their operations. We do believe that the improvement, the trend downwards, has been likely due to increased transparency from our end and public education about the snow removal operations. We are going to continue to educate and enforce those relevant bylaws. And as well as all vehicles moving forward, will be equipped with RFS cards. So when a member of the public approaches a vehicle, they are able to give them a card and say, this is how you can properly submit your, your concern. Rather than trying to explain it, it'll hopefully help that process for our operators.
Counsel Ramadas?
Thanks, Your Worship. It's kind of related to what Counselor Hamilton was talking about in terms of productivity and efficiency kind of a question here. And I may have asked this in the previous council meetings in the last year also, so apologize if I'm repeating myself. But are there any kind of sensors and things like that on these machines? And you can kind of figure out, you know, how efficient they are, like where they are moving, what's the productivity and things like those, like, like we do in mine sites?
We currently don't have a GPS tracking system.
That's right. So that's still, is that, is that ever going to be on a work plan to have high precision GPS on your plows?
We've tabled that for one year so that we can work on underlying systems and policy that's required rather than putting out the capital outlay without the capacity to do that work. So it was budgeted, has been pushed forward by one year.
Further?
In the meantime, CEO, is there any kind of, you know, non-tech type of alternative that you could have with guys going with a stopwatch or something and figuring it all out?
You may be delving into the weeds of operations from the governance table with that kind of a question, but I, I do know that bringing the team have been meeting regularly and I've had really positive feedback from more than one team member about the energy of the team, including presentation on the accessibility plan and work that they've got planned on the the road ahead. And while I think transparency and communication is helpful in combating the abuse or the negative attitude towards the team, I also think the team frankly are doing a better and better job. We've got some great operators on the team and and so they're committed to that kind of continual improvement. Like, what can we do with the tools we have to continue to do a better job? So.
And I did want to comment, thank you for for touching on it, Mr. Barnowski. There was a mention of the accessibility plan and working with the accessibility committee and, and in the report. So I appreciate that, that awareness.
Yeah, and I've got, actually got a slide on that coming up. So we'll touch more on that soon, for sure. Was there anything else?
No, please continue.
So the last two here, obviously, growth and resource demand is is going to be an ongoing challenge for a growing community. So we're going to continue to assess and strategically plan for equipment and staffing to maintain levels of service that the, as the community expands. And lastly, the windrow timing and accessibility. Windrows created after sidewalks have been cleared have led to accessibility concerns. And particularly for the seniors and individuals with mobility challenges. And so we are currently reviewing our operational sequencing, looking at how we can minimize our post clearance windrow impacts to sidewalks and on off ramps, which I'll touch on a bit more later as well. And where possible, staff are planning to alter plow operations and try some different oper- operational ways with their equipment to not block sidewalk access for those accessibility concerns. Paying, just paying more attention, having more awareness in general as operators. All right. So some wins for 2024, 2025. We integrated Wes Fernie into the city operations as ment- as mentioned last year, and it went really well. I've spoken with a few of the operators about this and really great feedback in terms of the operational end. We've improved efficiency and staff development. The crew has demonstrated strong responsiveness to the snowfall events. And as Michael had mentioned, the noticeable improvements within the team. And there's been a consistent team over the last three years. We have, we've had stable operators within our team, and I think that really helps as well. Good retention. So our expectation, expectations for the season ahead, one of them being the improved sand quality and efficiency. So I've touched on this already, but obviously the sand shelter being built currently to prevent sand from freezing, it'll create that consistent quality for effective winter road treatment. It'll streamline our loading and unloading process. It'll reduce time, physical labor, labor and increase morale amongst the operators as well. Because I feel like that was a pretty tricky job for them. It'll also enhance road safety due to the better application, having that winter sand covered. We also have an order currently from our 2024 budget. Things just take a little bit of time to get here, but a new addition to our fleet, it's a new sander, sander C. And this is going to increase the team's capacity to manage heavy snowfall, contribute to more efficient plowing operations with a newer, safer and more intuitive piece of equipment as well.
And an opportunity for elementary school students to name it.
Needs a better name than sander B. Okay, so our accessibility enhancements, we've been working closely, as you've heard, with the accessibility committee to improve our sidewalk accessibility across the city. This season, we'll try, we're going to trial alternative plowing methods, as I mentioned, to keep those sidewalk on off ramps clear. And our team's awareness of the accessibility needs has grown significantly.
Mr. Dupont, can you?
All right.
Thank you.
We're committed to collaborating and addressing challenges as they arise. These efforts will aim to make winter navigation safer, more inclusive for all residents. And this will be a learning process as we have more awareness around it. We're going to be learning from each other and sharing with what works, what hasn't worked within the team. It is on our radar and we want to do better in this area. And our brine implementation program. So we are introducing the brine program as part of our snow removal strategy. And so why brine? It, it prevents the snow buildup from bonding to the pavement and making plowing more effective. It's going to reduce ice buildup on the roads. And how we plan to integrate it is it, it's adding that other, another tool to our toolbox to improve that road safety and operational assist efficiency prior to and during those winter storms. So it's going to be applied the day before an anticipated rainfall or snow event. And starting with the priority one hills. Over time, we hope to expand this and move on to additional roads as resources allow. And we believe this proactive approach will help reduce hazards, improve response to our heavier winter weather. So what's new for 25, 26 season? We took on the West Fernie pathway internally this year. It has been highlighted in yellow along the top there. So it's between the visitor center and the provincial park sign. It was previously contracted out. And we've also taken on the Montane Parkway multi-use pathway, just a piece of it between Cacado Road and Whitetail Drive. This will ensure primary access to this neighborhood will be cleared to a consistent level of service throughout the season. So our total sidewalk clearing distance is up about, I believe it was about 4.7, what I said earlier, to 15.63 kilometers now of sidewalk clearing. So in summary, we've reviewed last season's performance. We've identified the challenges that we faced and how we plan to mitigate them. And we outlined improved improvements and the plans for 2025, 2026 season ahead. And our goals remain clear. We want to provide that dependable, quality service, create a livable, inclusive and safe community for everyone, and continue to improve our organization and our culture as we learn and adapt to the changing needs of this community. Thanks for your time and if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Counsel, questions? You got peppered with lots of them, so. I do have a couple myself, though. There was a, I remember a port, report going all the way back to, and this is well before your time, May of 2024, about retrofitting an existing truck to become a plow truck in West Fernie. And what became of that? Brad, do you? Thank you.
That truck is now being retrofitted to be our brine application truck. So our mechanic was able to outfit it. And basically, not for free, but we're able to absorb it in the operating cost. So there was no capital, no capital cost spent on that.
Okay. And so, sorry, where, where does, does sander C fit in then? Like?
Sander C will be our main sander. Just one of our current ones will be, become the spare.
Okay.
It's just a much more capable truck.
And in that same report, there was a, there was a estimated cost of $88,000 for a brine mixer. Is, is that?
We have.
All in place now or?
No, we have pivoted quite substantially. I believe our new brine maker is a much smaller unit. It's $14,000.
Ah, well done. That's a considerable savings. Mr. Barnowski?
I was looking at a draft and editing a report with the manager and director on fleet procurement that you'll see in the very near future that mentions the brine.
Okay.
Brine Master 1600? Something like that.
That sounds like from one of those Dave Pilkey books. Counselor Schusman?
Thank you, Mayor Milligan. First off, really happy to see the sand shelter going in. I've spent a lot of my career dealing with tarps and frozen dirt. It's just stupid. I mean, I'm glad we're not doing that anymore. On the brine, I'm excited about that, too. I actually read all the brine promotional materials because I was bored in Sparwood Public Works for a while. Looks like good stuff. The new plow and all that coupled with the brine, I think we're gonna see some good stuff this year. I'm really excited about it all.
So are we?
Counsel Ramadas?
Thanks, Your Worship, and I, I agree with Counselor Schusman's, something is clicking here. Everything is coming together. I just remember first year and second year in our council, it just felt like there was this dark, lots of moving pieces and I couldn't see the end result of all this coming together. And now when I see from better, you know, snow plowing policy that is, that still has challenges, don't get me wrong, but it is getting better. And to your fleet management, to having this sand shelter and everything, it just feels like something is clicking and they're, they're coming together as a plan now. Yeah, well done.
No, a lot of positive changes are happening right now.
Counsel Arty Kelly?
Thanks, Your Worship. That brine master made me think of K-Tell. Remember K-Tell? The brine master, you know. I may have missed it, so apologies, but when do we expect the sand shelter to be finished?
They are doing the foundation right now, and we've been given a timeline for the tent structure of mid-November or early December. We're hoping mid-November.
Counsel Hamilton?
With that timeline, is there any risk of weather moving in before it's finished and then leaving the sand that then gets covered? Or like, are we at risk of kind of closing the barn door after the horses are out? Or would we have the opportunity to heat up, dry out once the shelter's in place?
The sand is currently tarped, so we're doing our best to keep it dry. Obviously, it's going to get some moisture in it, but it hasn't been as rainy of a fall as previous years either, so.
Touch wood.
Yes, hopefully. Phase dry for at least a few more weeks, but we should be in a lot better shape than previous years.
Good. Well, thank you. And yeah, we're all excited to see another successful year of snow removal. So thanks very much.
Yeah, I'm excited to be a part of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 7.3, Fernie Pet Society, report from our Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities, Mr. Logan.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Council. Feels like forever since I've been standing up here. During the previous presentations, I was quickly sort of reducing the amount of speaking notes I was going to do. I don't have a presentation prepared. But as Pierre had explained earlier, the value of the park is, isn't in question here. So this is in response to a report that was done by Pierre on March 18th, 2025. And his presentation was outlining the value of the railway park, the funding shortfall of its operations, and a proposal for a city-supported pet-related funding and not drawn from property tax solution through DocuPet. So there was a report prepared by the building department, or the bylaw department. And once that report was reviewed by the other departments, there would be affected by it. There was a number of concerns. So the report that I've presented is sort of expressing some of those concerns from the other staff that would be affected by implementing one of these software solutions. So the park's busy. It's got 7,000 visitors on average per month. They're dealing with a, an operating budget of $15,000 to $18,000 per year. They don't have any reserves. They have limited volunteer capacity, but they have been actively fundraising. And most recently, they had a barbecue, and I think it was quite successful. So in preparation for this report, myself and my manager met with the pet society just to talk and unpack sort of the situation. And as a result of that, we sort of understand sort of the pinch points with their operating budgets. And we don't disagree that utilizing software to recover some of those pet licensing fees to pay for this amenity or bring the enrollment of pet licenses higher to meet some of the, actually, how many pets are in town is a good idea. So basically, the short-term plan, until we can do a more comprehensive review of a different software, is to just dip into my operating budget for general parks. And basically, I do this with the the Fernie trails lines for the dirt jumps already. So this would just be extending the same courtesy to this group through their service agreement. They could ask for me to cover expenses up to $5,000 per year. So that would be basic things like dog bags, you know, garbage bags, there, there. It's their, their ongoing operating expenses, uh, that they're struggling to keep up with. Uh, the longer term solution would be a more comprehensive review of our pet licensing strategy. And then would basically include the following, so a review of the current pet licensing fees. Uh, it would evaluate compliance rates and identify some strategies for improvement, whether that's public awareness campaigns or anything else. Uh, we'd also conduct a cost benefit analysis of the currency licensing services which we pay for, uh, but maybe aren't fully utilized. Um, and that would also include sort of the staff and operational costs attached to that software. And then also explore potential revenue sharing opportunities with the pet society contingent on increased compliance and licensing revenue in accordance, of course, with the community charter. Uh, and then through that, hopefully, we'd be able to provide some recommendations for optimizing, uh, the existing system in the short term. Uh, while we explore, uh, transition to a third-party provider for software. Is there any question?
Counsel Arty Kelly?
Uh, a couple, if you don't mind, Your Worship.
Yeah.
Two things, I, I do recall, and I could be wrong, but I recall Director Jensen speaking about our existing system having a module that we could add to the system to, uh, help us with licensing and I, I can't remember everything she said about it, but I seem to recall that it would speak to the current system that we had and it would be a module that we could add on. And then I do also recall, um, Officer Leach talking about an initiative that she and Officer Kramer were hoping to undertake to, um, sort of compel some more compliance with licensing. But I believe they ended up with another workload priority that maybe had sidetracked that. Do you know, Director, if they're, um, planning to go back to that plan?
Uh, so in the report, uh, which was informed by Director Jensen and her comments, through that building process or business process optimization process, project, we were analyzing our existing, uh, service provider, which is like ICD Vatom. So we pay an annual cost of fourteen hundred dollars for that. And I do also remember that there might have been opportunity to get a different module or maybe utilize that program a little better than we are right now. Alongside that compliance piece with comms or, um, just general awareness of, of the need for pet licensing and what they potentially pay for would also help generate more, more income from that. And what was the second question? Sorry?
Just wondering if you know if bylaw was planning to, um, reinstate their plan to, um, basically do a blitz, like they talked about, you know, going door-to-door, having, um, their ability to take fees mobile. Like, you know, if they saw someone with no license, well, here's your opportunity to get a license and we'll sign you right up. I just, I just remember her talking about that plan.
I'm not fully aware of that. Um, however, it's a great idea. That press, past presentation just on compliance with the parking, uh, during snow removal season. I could easily see uptick in pet licensing from having a building, a bylaw officer sitting outside the, the off-leash dog park for one afternoon a week sort of thing, uh, just for general awareness and education. But I'm not, I don't know specifically if they have a plan for that.
Yes, Borowski?
Yeah, the, the work was set aside largely due to, uh, wildlife conflict attention and going door-to-door to deal with wildlife conflict and support the rollout of organics. Pet licensing becomes a priority again in the, oh, I believe it's a spring bylaw enforcement has the seasonal priority policy that needs to come back to council for review, I do believe, but I think it's spring when they would again look at, at licensing as a, as a priority.
Counsel McIsaac?
Uh, thank you, Worship. So I'm gonna summarize what I think I, I heard there, which is that it's, we know we need to do a review of fees, we know we need better compliance and we know that we need better, more funding to support the dog park, all of which things DocuPet purported to do, but we don't want to use DocuPet. But we do want to get to a third-party software solution at some point. So, so what was incorrect about that? Because I see faces over there now going, no, that's wrong.
Maybe I'll try and explain it again.
Okay.
So the short-term solution's like, we can help offset some of the costs in the short term to that comprehensive review of what we're currently using. What are our goals with the new software? Is it bringing up compliance? Is it increasing rates? Is it? What is it? So, so we have to do that review first before we know which software to buy. Maybe it's DocuPet, maybe it's something else. The other issue, which is close to home for me, is that there's a long lineup of software to implement at the city and some of us have been patiently waiting for our turn. You know, hu- huge improvements to the, to the building inspector process of, uh, of, of, um, building permits. And that kind of jumped the line of something that was in an existing work plan. So what we're trying to avoid here is just include it in a work plan in twenty twenty six and have it not jump the line of some other soft critical software pieces that, uh, you know, will stretch that IT department a little thin if we were to add DocuPet in front or shortly behind it without a plan in place.
So really what you're saying, Mr. Logan, is you've seen a report. That report was not accepted for the number of reasons you cited in terms of timing and and now you've finished, you've provided a report that assigns it really just assigns, uh, or reassigns creation of another report for looking for a third-party software solution.
It, it would result in another report on the findings, but the steps that I've sort of outlined of what, what all the staff feel should happen before we go looking for a service provider, uh, is part of a bigger project that would happen in twenty twenty six. So you'd get a report on probably those findings and recommendations to then get in line for implementing another software.
And just so I understand, DocuPet is a third-party solution that potentially two of our staff would use? Yeah.
DocuPet is the platform that provides the licensing. The proposal from the pet society, as I understood it, was that we would work with them, but the city would fund the implementation and movement of our licenses and our program into that online program for licensing and then hand over the revenues related to that to support the operations of the dog park in a partnering agreement model. So we can charge a fee for a license, like a business license or a pet license, but those fees have to actually pay for a specific service. We can't make them a donation. So we actually also off the back of this have to define what are the services we want. Bring the agreement forward to council and then fund said services with the license fees through that kind of a model. But DocuPet may well be, um, it's a used system. It's one of the more popular systems. It may well be the right one when it all shakes out. My, uh, personal support, uh, for the recommendation is along the lines of Brett's is that we have a, a long list of existing technology and service priorities that we're cracking through and we're, we're cracking through them in a way that's working. Jumping this in at this point, um, takes, it takes us out of step where we've got some high priority items underway with that limited team right now.
And the five thousand you're proposing is taxpayer dollars are already budgeted. Is that correct?
That's correct. So that's out of my existing big pot of money for, uh, general parks operating. So it goes to pay for things like, uh, dangerous tree removal or a load of bark mulch or a load of topsoil, so.
So would it be eating into any other of those categories if we provide this five thousand for here?
Uh, well, yeah, in a roundabout way, it will for sure. At the end of the year, typically, there's a bit of money left over where we try and do some additional stuff or we stockpile some material for the next year. So, uh, I don't see this affecting the budget in any real way. And if it does, I will present that in budget meetings, uh, in future years if it becomes an issue.
Counsel Remnas?
Thanks, Counselor and Mayor. You guys asked a great question and, and I was struggling with this report, to be honest. And, uh, the clarification questions made it more clear in my mind. But now this five thousand dollars is what I'm kind of caught here, Your Worship, like. So are we just giving that, using that money just because we don't have? I don't know, what, what problem is it solving, that five thousand dollars? Um, and why now? Like, that's the piece that I'm unable to understand right now. So let me back up here. Pet Society came here, said, we have this amazing software solution that you can potentially use for your leash law and other things. And we said, well, we've got other pieces of software and other implementations that need to happen in the next couple of years. Let's park this. We can't use this docket control. I, I get that whole thing. This five grand, what problem is it solving?
I would say that the five thousand dollars would, would, uh, reduce the pressure that the pet society is, is coming to you, expressing concerns about not having enough operating funds to run the dog park.
That's.
Further?
Yeah. That's a separate issue, folks. That's, that's just, uh, you know, grant-seeking, providing grants, discretionary grant funding, that kind of an issue. I feel like we are mixing up our inability to, uh, to deploy a software solution with something else. Like I, that's the part that really confuses me. I, I'm not, I'm not so worried about the dollar value here. It's just what, what problem is it solving for the city operationally? That's, that's unclear to me.
If I may, what it's doing right now is a stopgap for implementing a software like they're suggesting. And it's not jumping in line of critical software like maintenance management software to organize and maintain and inform budgets for the majority of your assets that you own. Right now, we have nothing. Is pet licensing software more important than that? I would think no. And the five thousand dollars is just to get us to a place where we can complete that work that's already planned and then add this in a work, a future work plan.
So if I can paraphrase what you've just said, Mr. Logan. You heard what the pet society said. We don't, we can't implement their solution today. So we're gonna provide them with some funding to create an opportunity for us to investigate the solution.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Counseler McIsaac?
Uh, thank you, Worship. That, that was a, a good summary and I was gonna shoot for a clarification summary as well. And I, but I, what I will speak to, I think, which I think came across clearly in the report to me and and is clear from the fact that I'm an occasional user of that park is the Ferny Pet Society is caretaking a municipal amenity. And so this five thousand dollars goes to support their ability to caretake that amenity. While we figure out what a better financing solution for that is in the long term. Is that a fair summary of what's going on?
Yes.
Good, and Counsel Arty Kelly?
Thanks, Your Worship. Um, so I think I heard you say to, um, like an interim measure to add this to the twenty twenty six work plan to the software solution?
That's what's being proposed, yeah.
Okay, so we have attached a timeline to it. I just kind of wanted to clarify that we had.
Whose work line does it fall to? Just out of curiosity.
Not mine. Uh, it would likely be, and, and I am struggling to articulate this on behalf of the IT department and bylaw.
Yeah.
The reason why I'm doing the report is because I and my manager typically manage the service agreement with the Ferny Pet Society for operation of the railway.
Thank you for saying that, Mr. Logan. I apologize for interrupting, but I, because I read your report and I thought, wow, he's assigning a bunch of work to other people. But I, but that, that, that's helpful because you, you effectively manage a relationship with the Ferny Pet Society. So that, it's, it's the leap to the software solution that wasn't quite connecting for me. So thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I would just go further to say there's already a mechanism in place where the pet society can ask us for, for paying for certain things through that service agreement uh, in their work plan for the, the, the year that they present to us. So, uh, and also through that, uh, work plan, they've mentioned DocuPet, um, numerous times, actually. So it's, it's on our radar. Uh, it's just like everything in municipal government. There's only so much capacity and, uh, in my opinion, at this moment in time, those resources should be focused on the existing work plan and not being introduced and more work.
Thank you. That, I, this whole conversation has been helpful. Counsel Arty Kelly?
Thanks, Your Worship. It, it has. When I read the report, it was a little more awkward. And this might be an awkward question and apologies to Mr. Dupont, but is everyone sort of happy with this interim solution until we can get to a more final? Like, will this serve the needs of both parties? And the public, because let's be really honest, our, our dog park is very well-used, very well-loved and a tourist attraction. So, um, will this be workable, like for the kind of year that we need it to work? And then hopefully, we, we can institute something that's gonna be more long-term.
I can't speak for the pet society, but it's definitely a solution that staff supports.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to ask, sorry, one moment, Counsel Hamilton. Have we, in terms of our relationship with the, the, um, Ferny Pet Society, and, and something that was highlighted in your report was that and Counselor McIsaac has touched on, touched on, is they're managing a, um, Ferny of City amenity and that everything they build eventually becomes ours. Have we optimized, uh, with them our, uh, purchasing and sharing resources so that, so that they're getting the best deal? Or we're collectively getting the best deal from waste bags and that sort of thing? Have we, have we gone through that exercise?
Uh, no, but we will be through, you know, picking up the tab for some of these things. So part of that mindset or the theory is that we would use our buying power for dog bags or for garbage bags and, uh, have some cop savings with that, because we do purchase a lot. And, uh, you know, it's, it's not, it's not much to tack on an additional order to, to cover their needs.
Perfect. Uh, Counsel Hamilton?
Thank you. My, my comment was actually gonna be sort of similar. But I won't, I won't go there. Another question, though, that is, or maybe it's not so much a question, but my, my perspective on this is, as has been mentioned, we have a bunch of volunteers effectively operating a city facility on our behalf. Um, I hear loud and clear from staff that implementing the software right now is not ideal, given work plans is going to drive a throw a monkey wrench into a whole bunch of other things that, that are working. So I'm fully in support of this five thousand dollar stop measure, um, stopgap. And then working towards determining what the solution is, whether it's DocuPet, whether it's one of our internal systems already and adding a bolt on, on piece to that that will help pet licensing fund future, um, supports. But I, I guess the question that I'm kind of driving towards is, do we have a sense of what the cost, the actual, the true cost of maintaining this park is from a volunteer hours perspective? And, you know, in our partnering agreement, um, I apologize, I didn't go and dive into it. But what is the, what is the consequence if the pet society ceases to exist?
So within the service agreement, there's a section in there that talks about should the society be no longer able to operate the park? That, um, they're responsible for removing all of the components of it. So basically removing it back to a black, blank slate. In, in reality, is that ever gonna happen? Because it is a beloved, uh, amenity for all the community and it's heavily used, seven thousand visitors average, uh, a month. It's kind of like anything. It's like the Dirt Jumps. It's, it might be like the Field House. You know, a group of people have set out and they, and they fundraised money and they've been operating it. But is it sustained? You know, a group of people have set out and they, and they fundraised money and they've been operating it. Um, but is it sustainable? And, and I appreciate the dog park uh or the Pet Society coming with some solutions uh to work towards a sustainable. Uh, operation of it through volunteers. Um, but realistically, is that going to last forever? It might not. So. No, we haven't done the exercise of seeing how much that would cost if it was city labor, for example. Uh, but I can tell you for sure that it would be quite costly. It would require additional staff, additional equipment potentially. Um. So it's a great arrangement we have right now with uh, with community partners. Uh, like the FTA and the Furny Pet Society and uh the result of those agreements are great amenities for the community at a very. Very bargain price. So five thousand dollars doesn't seem like a ton for me to, to assist them until something better can come along to help them long-term.
Counselor Schussman?
Thank you, Mayor Milligan. As a non-dog owner and non-dog myself, I uh have very little experience of the uh, the amenity at question. Um. I will say that uh, you know, having read the report, I was kind of looking at it a scant, but following this remarkably frank and interesting discussion. I, I can see clearly how we uh, we came to be here and I think that uh. The, the proposed solution seems reasonable and, and while not the best. Not perfect. It's, I think, a good enough way forward. Um, you know, the better the dog park functions, the uh less um dog poop I have to pick up over at the Derby grounds. Um, so. Hundreds of pounds a year, literally. Um, but anyways, no, I think we should probably. Move forward with this recommendation here.
Thank you. Counsel Ramadas and then Counsel McIsaac.
Thanks, your worship. Uh, just feedback to you, Director. If you had started off saying, you know, how much it would have cost us to run this. I, I think uh Counsel Hamilton's question should have been the first thing that you should have answered in your, in your report. Then it would have cleared all this confusion. I, I just didn't understand the report when I read and after these folks who are much smarter than me asked, started asking the questions. I understood what the implications are. Um, so anyway. Just, just a feedback for yourself. Just make it as crystal clear as possible. If I don't do this, how much is it going to cost? Start with that and then we will all be helping you support this uh cause.
Counsel McIsaac.
Uh, thank you, worship. I just wondering with regards to the direction requested and moving this forward.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't, this doesn't constitute a budget change. It's just a budget. Moving around, I guess, inside. So this committee can do the staff direction. We don't have to bring this to another meeting. Is that accurate? And if so, then.
Oh, but it, it, it is sufficient to allow Mr. Logan to reallocate his budget? Okay.
Cause I, I'm, I'm prepared to make some kind of motion.
Okay, so do you want to read the amended?
Okay, uh, the recommendation is that committee direct staff to use existing funding, uh existing funds. From the general parks op- operating budget of up to five thousand dollars um for the Furny Pet Society in twenty twenty-six. Uh, and that staff be directed to undertake a formal review of pet licensing and dog park services in twenty twenty-six.
Moved by Counsel Hamilton?
Question.
Question?
Question, uh, before moving on. Uh, revenue sharing was removed from the second part of that. Was that on purpose? Cause. Is that on purpose? That's on purpose. Okay, yeah. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Logan. Uh, being cognizant of the time. Mr. Burditt? Business licensing? Be quick. No, kidding.
Move the recommendation.
How many slides? Ah, perfect.
Evening, counsel. Uh, good evening, Mayor Milligan. Hello, counsel. Tonight I'm talking about business licenses. Uh, and this last came for council in June. And at that time I illustrated for council how much revenue the program brings in and estimated for council how much staff time is spent in terms of dollar value. Uh, brings in eighty thousand dollars in revenue and just under ninety thousand in costs. And while that does seem like a lot, but uh, but when you factor in. Fire inspections, bylaw follow-up, front counter support, like printing, mailing, re-mailing. Uh, fielding questions, processing payments, it definitely adds up. So it's roughly a hundred and twelve dollars in cost per business license issued. Uh, and cost aside eats up a large chunk of front counter time in January, which is already a busy time for finance stuff. Also in June, I presented two options to consider uh for increasing fees. One was a flat increase from the current price of a hundred dollars to a hundred and fifty or two hundred. Option number two is more of a tiered approach based on the type of business that's applying for a business license. Council in June agreed that uh the best approach would be to spend some time with the business community, collecting some feedback on that particular issue. So then in August, the city with the help from the chamber hosted one of the chambers business banter events at the Legion. There was. Approximately twenty-five to thirty attendees at that event. Um, there were several questions asked of staff there and one suggestion in particular that the chamber helped administer the business license program. We did investigate this a bit. And we weren't able to find any current examples of this happening in other municipalities. Um, but perhaps more importantly, it doesn't really reduce the cost for the city. Most of the city's cost is in staff time. And removal of this program wouldn't be expected to reduce any staffing level at the city. Also, if in theory the chamber uh were to keep a portion of the fees um for doing this, the city would then be even, even worse. Financial position by handing that over to them. So I'm not uh. At this time, not prepared to recommend being a leader in this space. Um. We also had an online survey asking for feedback about business license increases. The support for either option of fee increase was split almost exactly down the middle. Uh, and there was general support um for the fees increasing with only fourteen of forty-nine saying that it didn't seem fair. Um, there was also a theme that if we were going to do the tiered approach, defining what business would fall into high impact seemed arbitrary and difficult.
Sorry, you're. Mr. Burditt, you indicated fourteen people said it didn't seem fair, but your slide says twenty-six people indicated it wasn't fair.
Oh, that twenty-six is a typo. Twenty-six indicated that they did think that the increase in fees were fair. Uh, apologies for that oversight. Yeah. Uh, and yeah, I've got them.
Yeah, it's in your report. Yeah.
Yeah, apologies for that.
No, no, no.
It's a whole new play out.
Yeah, well, it will uh, just for folks at home, like it's ju- juxtaposition of the numbers that are in your report.
Yeah, thanks for catching that. I missed that. Uh, and so with all that in mind, given the even split between the two approaches and the fact that the tiered approach would, would uh require a bit more time to administer and monitor. Staff thinks the best option for a business license fee increase would be the flat increase to a hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I picked a hundred and fifty because that would. Increase our revenue to a hundred and twenty, so that would stop subsidizing that amount and also allow for a little more, uh, you know, maybe casual help in. Busy months to administer this program. One, to free up finance staff to wo- work on more, you know. Finance things and also to improve the level of service by getting back to people quickly who are asking for a new license. Um, and the point of tonight is for council have a discussion on this program and ultimately direct staff to bring back the bylaw for amendment. And that's it. Happy to answer questions.
Counsel Ramadas.
I just want to move the motion, your worship.
Taken in by Counsel Schussman. Any discussion? Counsel Hamilton?
Yeah, the one question I wrote down, which is, I think you did a good job of actually answering is why you chose one fifty over two hundred. Um, but I'm curious if. There's any value in increasing it to two hundred or. Do we have that capacity um legally, I guess, like? If, if we're going to have an extra fifty dollars per business license. What could we use that money for?
Thanks, Counsel Hamilton. That's a fair question. Um, so that would bring in an extra forty thousand and we would. Explore that additional revenue and budget time, but some ideas for things that it could be used for um. Uh, would be to uh, you know, put it in a reserve for future use. Um. But also, uh, I did have another example that slipped my mind because I knew somebody was going to ask me that question. Um.
Mr. Borowski?
It, it's, it's important for us to clarify that that reserve and future use or the additional funds need to be directly tied. To business licensing and business license administration and the services related to it. So while we could. Increase that fee, um, the additional casual service and additional level of service and improvements in speed and turnaround are justifiable under the recommended increase, but a, a larger one. We should really be then defining what additional service level. We want to set and then setting the revenue to, to achieve that.
Yeah, and while I appreciate the question, I, I. At this juncture to be hunting around for things to, to justify the additional increase, I think is, feels a bit off to me. Mr. Burditt?
Right, which is why the hundred and fifty is, is, is my number. Uh, another, another example I had in mind was uh, we could explore a, a. Future software so that people can log in online themselves and renew their business license at a much faster pace than having to come into city hall. Um, so that's another example of something it could be used for.
DocuLicence. Yes, I guess. Counsel McIsaac.
Uh, thank you, worship. Uh, this is more a comment with regards to the choices between the flat and the tiered-based stuff. Looking through what the other communities were doing. It, it appears to me that they are. Putting their thumb on the scale of the market in the way that they have. Picked and, and chosen some of the business licenses. Some of them are quite significant for specific types of businesses. And I, I've, I'm less comfortable with that, your worship. I'm not sure that we should be making a judgment call. On the value of individual business types and, and pursuing higher fees against some that are perhaps less desirable or lower fees for desirable. I'm not sure that that's really within our particular purview. So I just wanted to speak in favor of the, the flat rate, which I think. Speaks more fairly to the business community to say, you know, we're not gonna, because you're business A, we're not going to charge you more than business B, just because. That, that, that's not the right business for us or whatever the case may be. If you get, if you get my gist.
I do, and I, I, I think, Mr. Burditt, you touched on it as well. There's a, there's a. There's always going to be a gray area, a bit, a gray area between businesses where somebody's doing this and, and that. Somebody's going to cry foul. So I thi- I think a flat fee just sets, sets the number, meets our needs. And we can always revisit it in the future. Any further discussion?
It's, it's just for cost recovery, your worship. This is not a revenue generation opportunity for us.
Understood, yeah. Uh, without a call to question, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Burditt.
Thank you.
Uh, I will, with that, I will, uh, we will adjourn the meeting at.